Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the NIC Board of Trustees meeting for April 27th, 2016. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to open the meeting with.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One of our traditions that has developed also is that we open the meeting with a reading of the mission statement, and I'd ask trustee Wood to do that for us, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the northern Idaho communities it serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning.
Thank you. There's a verification of the quorum. We have four trustees present. One trustee Nielsen is absent, and there are no guests that have signed up. We do have some guests that are going to be making a special report for us, and we'll introduce those in a moment.
Bring the microphone closer.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. Has everyone reviewed the minutes, and if so, are there any corrections or modifications, additions? Hearing none, the minutes will be received and approved as submitted. No one has signed up for public comment, and we are moving right along. This evening, we have a special report from the Idaho Business for Education group that have come up from Boise to make a presentation to us, and Judy, would you like to introduce them?
Happily so, Mr. Chair. Fellow board members and college community, I'm happy to share with you our chair of IBE. You hear lots about Idaho Business for Education, and our staff has been up here before, and although staff has been in business also, and Rod reminded me of that, 38 years in the business, the current chair of our board, Bob Larkin, is here, and he's the CEO of White Cloud Analytics, which collects a lot of health data to help us all be healthy and cost-effective. Isn't that how that works, Ma?
That's right.
Okay. But in this case, I'm highlighting his generous time in spending a week here in northern Idaho and another week later, next week, throughout the state, away from operating that busy business, to talk about his commitment to education. In addition to being here as chair of our board, he'll be overseeing our activities for the next year. So I asked him to tell us a little bit why he got hooked on this, and as you can see, our mission statement is there before you, which he will be telling you more about, and I'm just really proud and appreciative of his efforts at championing education. Tell us why you're here.
Thank you, Judy, and thanks to the board for having me today. I'll try to wrap this up in 10, 15 minutes. I know you have a lot of important business. I have two slides, one I will start with and one I will finish with. That keeps it simple. First, a quick note on Idaho Business for Education. We are roughly 150 members of business executives, businesses across the state, most of the large businesses, if not all of the large businesses, a significant number of medium-sized businesses and some smaller businesses across the state who have come together with one mission, and that's what's on the wall today, is we want to be a driving force beyond the development of, to drive the development of an education system that aligns with the jobs that we're creating, both today and into the future. You've often probably heard the State Board of Education refer to their 60% goal, that 60% of people entering into the workforce need some sort of post-secondary, one-, two-, four-year sort of degree. We know that number from recent studies, and IBE, a couple of years ago, did that, replicated a study like that in the state of Idaho and confirmed that that's what Idaho's own business people talk about, is that somewhere between 60 and 70% of the jobs that we're creating require some education beyond high school. And that's why IBE exists, and I'll tell you, the press, the burning need behind that, I'll finish with that. Perhaps a good place to start, though, is some context behind myself, and as Judy asked me to tell a little bit of my own story on why I've decided to take this week and next out of my business to travel the state and try to further the IBE cause and further education in the state. I grew up probably two or three drainages to the east of here, southern part of the Flathead Valley in Montana, and I grew up, like I say, mostly hatched under a rock and grew up on a mountainside somewhere, over in the Mission Mountain Range, and I was in grad school in Bozeman, Montana, when a small company in Boise, Idaho showed up and was recruiting. I was their first college hire. They were a small company, spinoff of Hewlett-Packard in Boise. All the job offers that I had at the time, which was, there was quite a few job offers for computer engineers at the time, they were all in Los Angeles or Seattle or someplace, and I didn't really want to go there, so. Boise sounded like an Oklahoma place, and I moved to Boise, and I've been there ever since. I built a couple software businesses in Boise. The one before White Cloud was a company called ProClarity, which was a leading analytics tool on top of the Microsoft platform. We built an interesting little business in Boise. We won probably about 50 industry awards, sold most of our product outside of the state. Matter of fact, we used to sell, I remember looking at our sales every month and going, you know, we sell more software into London, England, every month than we have sold into Idaho in the history of the company, and so, very international business from day one. 2006, Microsoft bought the business, and I spent a couple of years commuting to Seattle to work for Microsoft before I decided to start another company, and that's White Cloud. As we grew, ProClarity was one of the fastest-growing technology companies in the U.S. for multiple years. We were doubling our headcount every nine to 10 months, three cycles in a row. We were in the Hot 100, we were in the INC 500, in the top 100 of the INC 500 for a couple of years in a row, and we were, we had a pretty good run of it, but somewhere around 200 employees, our ability to hire started to come to a grinding halt. And specifically, where it started was in software developers, software engineers, but then it started to spread through most of the rest of the business. And that got me very concerned that if we're going to be able to continue to grow, we need a pipeline of employees. And I can remember the last year before we sold the company to Microsoft, 100% of the people that we hired, we had to move in from out of state. And that takes a lot of time, it's very expensive, and it slowed down our growth rate. We got Microsoft to agree to move to Idaho, which was, we thought was quite a gem at the time. They moved down to Boise, created Microsoft Boise, and agreed to give it a run. They tried to hire for four years, and after four years of not being able to hire, they decided to shut down operations and move them back to Seattle. That's what got me interested in education. And for a lot of years, I used to grumble in private, because I figured it was just us nerds in the software industry that were having this problem. And as I compared notes with other business executives around the state, what I came to learn was that we weren't an outlier. We were the canary in the coal mine. This shortage of engineers hit us almost two decades ago, and we've been living with it ever since. But I can tell you now stories of Simplot Company. I can tell you stories around Clearwater Paper. I can tell you stories in every corner of the state where critical jobs that are needed to advance the growth of the organization are in critical short supply, and they're almost always educated jobs, if not all exclusive. And that's what really drove me to start to put my personal time and effort, and I've got 150 colleagues who are also putting their time and effort, in specifically trying to be a very passionate, focused, energized voice of business to try to transform Idaho's education system, because it was a great education system, and it served us well in the industrial age. I think we all know that we live in a different world right now. I recognize that, because I used to come over here and play baseball when I was in high school, and I drove down the streets yesterday, and it doesn't look like a lot stayed the same. And, you know, that's true for the labor market as well, and I think what nobody would deny is that if you drive down the streets of Corral Lane, say, 20 years from now, that it's going to look like it does now, and the labor market doesn't look the same either. And we're transforming into an information economy, and it's shifting the very nature of the workforce. And that is really the driving force behind IBE, because the problems that I experienced in hiring software people exist in lots of disciplines, in lots of organizations right now. And I'll go to my second slide. There's been a lot of discussion in the public theater over the last couple of years about the wage gap, and a lot of hand-wringing and a lot of discussion about the fact that wages in the United States are flat and have been flat for a long time. I'm an analytics guy, so I kind of don't take things for face value. I want to see the numbers. Ran across this particular graph, which to me is absolutely the pivotal information that we need to wrap our minds around as community leaders across the state. This slide says it all. The fact is, is wages haven't been flat. Wages have been growing very handsomely for people who have an education, and for people who don't, who didn't finish high school, things can be rather brutal, and for people with only a high school degree, they're increasingly getting brutal. And as you can see from this chart, which started in '63, no matter how the economy, if the economy was up or the economy was down, all classes, all cohorts of workers, regardless of their education, everybody grew, everybody declined. In 1980, something shifted, something that we couldn't have seen at the time, probably couldn't even have seen it in 1990. By 2000, it would start to, the signal would have started to show. This particular chart ends at 2008. I haven't found an updated version of it, but I've seen pieces of it. It just shows the continuing spread of those lines. The red line is the most educated part of our population, and the bottom lines are the least educated part of our population. That is a fundamental shift in supply and demand in the workforce. It's not a conspiracy theory. It's simple economics. When there's an undersupply of a certain class of workers, and in this case, highly educated workforce, wages go up. And when there's an oversupply, like there is with undereducated workforce right now, you get wage suppression and wage decline. And historically, maybe we had 60 to 70% of our jobs required high school. Now it's been flipped, but as that flips, it leaves a lot of people in the middle, because for every job that we have for somebody who only, we only require a high school education, we sometimes have two people who want that job. And that's not good for wages, and it's certainly not good for their standard of living and their ability to raise a family. On the other end of that dynamic is the opposite effect, and that's the effect that I experienced in Boise 20 years ago, got acute 10 years ago, and I face even today, which is when growing businesses are trying to grow and thrive in this state, because we stay here for a reason, we can't find the workforce we need. And if we can't find the workforce we need and fill those critical jobs, and it'll vary by industry to industry what that specific job is, what we can't find those jobs, we can't grow. And when we can't grow, then as a business executive, you're really left with two decisions. Do I want to stay flat, relatively flat, and become increasingly irrelevant in my marketplace? Or do I want to move out of state? And I can tell you, from the southern part of the state, I've seen probably no less than a dozen companies over the last five or six years leave the state due to a shortage of workers, and I applaud the work that you do, because you guys are on the front edge of trying to close down the 60% gap that we have. That data is undeniable. It's not a blip in the radar. That's a long-term trend, and that trend will continue until we can transform the young people that go into the labor force and align their skills and education with what business, the types of jobs that businesses are creating. And so, that is the jux of my story. When I first started championing for education reform in the state, a lot of people I ran into saw it as a moral imperative. I would contend it is a moral imperative, because we owe a better future to our grandchildren than we have. But I think it's moved way beyond a moral imperative at this point in time. Sometimes in some parts of our society, morals can be optional. This is a survival imperative, I think, for this state, and IBE stands ready to take up arms and do what we can do as business leaders to drive focus on this particular issue and champion the cause, because our survival depends on it. Or, as a smarter person than I once said, change is not actually necessary, because survival's not actually necessary. But I think we stand right now, ready to meet that. We've made huge progress in the last couple of years at the legislative level, but nobody gets educated in the state house, so they get educated in your halls and in your classrooms. And so, that change can't just be policy and funding at the state level. That needs to be mirrored by activation, engagement, and movement at the local level as well. And so, we're up here today in northern Idaho, trying to figure out how we can get business to do its part in driving that change in north Idaho. So, with those comments, I'll stand for questions. Any questions? Kristi.
Thank you. That was a great presentation, and it's really exciting to hear that you're here in north Idaho, seeing what you can do. Fortunately, through Judy Meyer, our board's been able to kind of be in touch with IBE throughout the years, and we've even got to attend a few of your board meetings, but there hasn't been an active chapter in northern Idaho, except for Judy and Steve, and that's kind of adjunct, yeah. And so, it's very exciting, and you've talked to us about what needs to happen. How can NIC help be a partner in what you'd like to pull together in the north?
Very good question. Well, what we would like to do as an organization is have a vibrant chapter in the northern part of the state that is aligned with what our statewide chapter is pushing in the state house. We're aligning that with the local needs. So the local needs are informing the state policy concerns, and the state policy initiatives are being supported locally. And if we can get those two to go, we can move mountains. I'll give you an example. I spent nearly a decade trying to convince Boise State that we needed more computer science graduates, and after a decade of speaking repeatedly, we had gone from 22 graduates a year to 23 graduates a year. Impressive progress. Mind-boggling, actually. When I got involved with IBE, and we started to have the ability to have a discussion both at the dean and the college level, and at the president level, and at the state board level, and at the governor's level, and we've got those people to see the issues we were talking about. I believe in next spring's cohort, Boise State will likely graduate close to 200 software engineers. We can move the numbers, and we can move them fairly quickly, but we need to align. We think business is in a critical voice in aligning, aligning to what our needs are going to be. So we think, you know, we're going to try to get our membership as large as possible here locally. Their job's not going to be to fly to Boise. Their job's going to be to be here, to engage in the local community. We studied as part of, I was on the governor's task force for a couple of years, another fine way to entertain yourself if you're bored, is task force meetings. After two years of task force meetings, one thing that came out of it that really stuck in my mind was, we studied in our 20 recommendations, a lot of those came out of studying states that had transformed their education system, countries that had transformed a whole country. We weren't looking for people who had made a 10% gain. We were looking for people who had doubled their numbers, who had significantly transformed the system. And the thing that was, tactics varied, whether it was Poland or Finland or Massachusetts. Tactics always varied based on the local dynamics, and I think that's going to be true across Idaho when we do it here. But there was one thing that was always present: focus. It started with focus, and it didn't go anywhere without continued focus. And so, we need to drive this focus. A key part of what north Idaho can do, what your organization can do, is help connect the dots. You know, we have a lot of students in our high schools who look at mathematics as not as a gateway to a career, maybe as a plumber or millwright or a software engineer, but they look at it as a pain, because they can't connect the dots. They don't have the life experiences to understand what that means. And so, a lot of kids get out of high school. I actually know of a couple of kids who graduated from high school with four-point grade point averages, only to enroll in college and find out they needed remediation, because they didn't take the right classes to prepare themselves for post-secondary. And what north Idaho can do, what NIC can really do, is help the local communities, schools really connect the dots, that 60% is not somebody else's goal, it's our goal, it's our mandate. It means as much in this community as it means in any community in the state, and it means something to each and every one of them. Their livelihood depends on it, and so, we got to connect the dots. And I think we got to work from the K all the way to career. We got to align, we got to show people the options, we got to connect the dots so that people are anxious to take more aggressive classes, to push themselves on a learning, that getting four points in easy classes is no badge of courage. I personally don't want those people in my company, because unfortunately, my company runs into challenges, and I need people who can take on a challenge, and taking the easy road out is not taking, that's not meeting a challenge, that's not learning the skills that we need in the business force. And so, I think connecting those dots is probably the, one of the first things that comes to mind.
Well, as a quick follow-up, will you have, or do you intend to have, a local board of directors, like your board in Boise?
Yes.
And if so, perhaps there could be some opportunities for higher education to serve on that board?
That's an excellent idea. We're in the process. We met with Judy yesterday and today, and we've been meeting with, meeting with local leaders here. We've, starting that very process.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Hi, Bob, if you don't mind, I have a question. First of all, like the entire board, I want to thank you and IBE for what you do. Quite frankly, getting business together and getting them focused is, we all understand that's a big thing. We have a cultural problem here in this state, a cultural problem that does not appreciate education, and we've got to break that culture. And being able to do it with government and business and education all working in the same direction is probably the way it's going to happen. And with that in mind, you know, we set these goals about how many people we want to educate, and we, you know, and what time period and that sort of thing, and everybody says that business and industry needs better educated employees for the future. But I look at the statistics, and you probably know them better than I do, about how many people in this state are on minimum wage, how many people on this, in this state don't go beyond high school, how many people are working, you know, the whole families working jobs in order to be able to pay the house payment, and they, they start to think they don't have enough time or effort or money to go to, to go to something beyond K-12. And we knew, we know here from our own education, from our own experience, that when people are out of work, they'll come to get an education, but when the work starts to come back, they got to go to work, and they don't have time for education again. And so, some way or other, we've got to, we've got to help them through that, that conundrum, and we, in this, in our environment, we have a very active foundation that is very active in creating scholarships for people to try and help break through some of those financial barriers. But I can't help but think, and this is my view of it, I suspect, that business could help out more by being at the front of the line rather than being at the back of the line, rather than waiting for people to come out of the educational system and say, okay, we're ready for a job. Have the, have business be upfront and say, not only do we have jobs for you, and we're going to identify exactly what they are, but we're going to offer you, if not internships, some kind of actual exposure to these things, so people get excited about getting an education. And, and I'm wondering if, if your organization has explored at all, or is exploring, ways and means by which we might be able to do that, maybe with some state help in terms of tax subsidies for employers who, who help bring students into the educational program and that sort of thing. Could you explore that?
Yes. I think we, as an organization, haven't collectively done anything, but we, as a group of senior executives across the state, have collectively done individual things. For example, my business is in downtown Boise. 10% of the people, more than 10% of the people that walk into the building every day are interns. We typically take interns, we try to recruit them in freshman and sophomore year. We give them jobs at a significantly higher wage than the local pub would pay, quite a bit. We give them ultimate flexibility to not show up for a week or two during finals, and we usually hand them an extremely lucrative job offer at the end of their junior year, so we can maybe keep our competitors from luring them away in their senior year, because we're in a high shortage sort of situation. I know a lot of our members are doing that, and I think the discussions around how we better connect the jobs that we have and also help connect those dots with the students is something important. We'll be continuing to look at how to do that in a structured way. There's a really important message, I think, that us as community leaders need to think about. We, once a year, IBE has a legislative academy. We kick off the legislature every year by bringing in some outside experts, and in January, we brought in an outside expert from the Hoover Institute at Stanford, economist. And just looking at the wage level, and that's represented up there, if you banned our citizens, our working citizens, by their level of education and what the wage is at that level. He did an interesting thing, is he took our population, didn't add a single person to our roads, didn't add a single person to our infrastructure, just took our population today and remixed them to the same level of education that Minnesota has today, and said, if you did that, your GDP would double. And education from K all the way through higher ed would be effectively free, because people who make twice the wage usually pay 10 times the sales, the income tax. It's the nature of a progressive tax system. And so, we don't have a wage problem in this state. We have an educated workforce problem. We think business has got a really important role. We have a diversity of needs, and so, sometimes it's taken us a while to get rallied, but I'm here to tell you, we are here, we're rallied, we're focused. We understand how important this is, and we'll do everything we can to partner with organizations to help move things forward.
Great. Thank you very, very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you. And by the way, you know, we've heard this message before, but I don't think we've heard it quite as well as you did it today, so thank you very much.
Yep. Great. Thanks for being here. Good job.
Okay. Our next agenda item are the constituent reports, and we have Sean Collins from ASNC. Sean, welcome. You can introduce yourself as the new guy on the block, huh?
Hello, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, Mr. Chair, members of the board, President Dunlap, President's Cabinet, constituent leaders, and other guests here tonight. My name is Sean Collins. I've seen probably many of you around campus. I've been elected for the ASNC president for the academic year of 2016, 17. I'm really excited to start my term this year. I think I have some really good ideas, and I think our new student government has some really good ideas on things we can do to address student concerns on campus. I've spent the last year in ASNC as originally the Senate Pro temp, and then I was the, as this last semester, I was the vice president of ASNC as well. I'm currently majoring in history and plan on to go to grad school to teach at the collegiate level when I'm done. So far, what ASNC has been up to since the last report we gave, we ended our elections in the middle of April, and from there, we've been training the new ASNC group. We have a full board, that means eight senators, a vice president, and a president. We have our former Senate Pro temp, Phil Hagan, is working on a project binder to bring all the old ideas. working on a project binder to bring all the old ideas into the new group. I, along with Heather Erickson, our advisor, began planning phase for summer, the conferences we're going to be sending our senators to. And our outgoing group just passed five resolutions at the last meeting. They were as follows: a resolution regarding a multicultural center on campus, a resolution inducting the new student government, a resolution for a full-time club advisor, a resolution on shared governance on campus, and a resolution approving the new ASNC bylaws. And copies of those resolutions will be sent out to the campus here shortly. So, during our Tuesday workshop yesterday, student government had an extensive discussion on the North Idaho College Board of Trustees discussion last week regarding the districting of Cooney County. Students would like the Board of Trustees to reconsider their position on the matter of the districting. We feel the board's actions do not have the college's best interests at heart. The board has many items to attend to on their plate at the moment. We understand the need to move on from the issue, but the board, but the choice the board la, last week chose to do had legacy impacts far beyond just this board, but every board beyond it. In this country, we face many extremes when it comes to gerrymandering. This isn't quite that, but it does move people away from the center, and we feel it is an important, as a legacy item, that the board would like to leave. So, as students, we urge you to reconsider the position you took last week, and if a revote could happen, or something the legislator could do, we would highly enjoy that. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Sean, let me, let me comment on your request by the students to have us look at the redistricting. From the standpoint of this, I want to applaud you for having the courage to come forward with a comment on that. So many times, people have individual feelings, they feel one way, but they don't feel like they can come forward and say it. And you should be congratulated, and so should the Senate, for deciding to come forward with their position and make it public. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next constituent report is staff assembly. Jessica?
Good evening, Chair Howard, trustees, President Dunlap, members of President's Cabinet, and guests. Staff Assembly met for their regularly meeting on Thursday, April 14th, which Teresa Henderson, our Vice Chair, graciously led. Heather Erickson and Sarah Garcia presented on the REC Center, and we're pleased to promote the groundbreaking that's coming up on May 4th. Tammy Haft, our, I'm going to get her title wrong, Tammy Haft talked about how ORS is changing. New students will meet with an advisor and register for their classes. It's not quite completely lined out how the program will look, but it'll be a good change that will get more one-on-one time with the student, and actually have them leave with a schedule. Ken Ordenski gave a PC update for us. PC is working hard on the IO recommendations that came forth, and the college is moving to a new cloud-based Microsoft platform for students and employees. Open enrollments for employee benefits will be May 2nd through the 24th, and the staff elections are almost complete, and we're looking to have our new people in place at the beginning of May. That concludes my report. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Karen?
Faculty Assembly.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, trustees, President Dunlap, members of President's Cabinet, and colleagues and guests. Faculty Assembly also met on Thursday, the 14th. At this meeting, we elected our Faculty Assembly officers for the upcoming school year. Our new chair will be Jeff Carr, Journalism Instructor. Our Vice Chair will be Joe Jacoby, Drama Instructor, and our Secretary/Treasurer will be Lisa Wilcox, English Instructor. So we've got a really great team coming up for the next school year, and I thank them very much for taking this on. At this meeting, we also voted to spend a portion of our Faculty Assembly budget on ordering 50 copies of the new North Idaho College Common Read Book, Just Mercy, so those copies will be available to faculty in hopes that they will use them and consider how they might work them into their curriculum or participate in that next year. We also had a report from Carrie Hines and Tammy Haft on those same changes, coming up to ORS and advising. We also had a report from the ASNC Committee that faculty have been collaborating with on figuring out ways of lowering textbook costs for our students, and Brian Galnet from the North Idaho College Bookstore joined them and shared the ideas that they've been talking with, with them about, and it sounds like they have some good things going in the works there. I also opened nominations for faculty senators for next year, and we will be electing those senators in May. We also had a special meeting of Faculty Assembly yesterday, April 26th. I had faculty members approach me and wanted an opportunity to discuss the trustees vote on the new trustees state-mandated zones that took place last week. So I kind of sent out an email to see if faculty were interested in this, if we could get a quorum, and there was definitely interest in it. So we met yesterday, and we did pass a resolution that I would like to read to you right now. And the resolution is as follows: "Even though the North Idaho College Board of Trustees' actions on Monday, April 18th, 2016, were legal, the Faculty Assembly questions the board's process and decision regarding the new zones they drew to comply with Idaho House Bill 512. Our reasons for concern are as follows. Number one, CSI and CWI took similar action as required by the state legislature. CSI's board voted to approve a proposal that was designed without any knowledge of where its trustees lived. CWI's board voted to approve a plan that did indeed impact one of its trustees because the plan most fairly represented the regions and cities it serves. At NIC, two trustees benefited from the redesigned zone plan they chose, yet did not recuse themselves from that vote. Number two, NIC's special meeting regarding the zone creation was held on short notice, which prevented time for public comment or for input from the college community and constituencies. The subject of this meeting was extremely important, influencing the community and the future of the school for many years ahead. Number three, the redrawn map selected is inferior to the map originally designed without consideration of trustees' addresses because it has a larger deviation from the target. And number four, this decision sets a precedent for future rezoning. Therefore, the Faculty Assembly respectfully requests that the Board of Trustees reconsider their action of April 18th, 2016, in order to apply the highest possible ethical standard to the process and maintain public trust in the board's decision." And that concludes the resolution and my report.
Any comments or questions? Let me echo what I told Sean, I, we appreciate, quite frankly, the faculty taking on some of these difficult questions, and, and coming forward with their collective feeling, so that the board can understand that. Now, what we do about it, I'm not sure, but I do know that we all appreciate your coming forward with these concerns, and giving us the reasons for it, so that we can consider that as we move forward. So thank you very, very much for all that. Appreciate it.
We very much appreciate the opportunity the board affords us to do that.
Thank you. Okay. John Tromble, for the Senate.
Chair, members of the board, President Dunlap, Attorney Mark Lyons, and colleagues and guests, tonight I will win the contest for the shortest constituent report. We met on April 21st, on Thursday, and our guests included Graydon Stanley, Vice President of Student Services, Aaron Norvell, HR Director, Alex Harris, Title IX Coordinator. In the course of our meeting, we approved, passed, rather, for our first reading, Policy 3.02, Point 12, Point 03, Professional Consulting, Policy Procedure 5.14, Prior Felonies, as well as the first reading of the Title IX Policy and Procedure, which is a large undertaking, that particular one. And so, we'll be thoroughly reviewing that in the future. Our next meeting will be on Thursday, May 12th, and that will conclude our year. We will not be able to elect representatives till that time, because we're waiting on the other constituencies to select senators for the College Senate. Are there any questions?
No questions. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Our next agenda item is the President's Report. President Dunlap.
Mr. Chair, trustees, and colleagues, good evening. My short, my report will be very short as well, so I'll run that contest with John, and then I'll remain up here for the first reading of the RIF policy. There's only two items that I want to mention tonight as part of my report. First of all, the master plan, the draft master plan has been completed, and you've been provided a copy of that. We're not asking for comments, or approval, or discussion at tonight's meeting, because we do have a long agenda. However, over the course of the next month, we would like to finalize that draft master plan. The master plan includes input from academics, from student services, from information technology, from business and finance, from foundation and fundraising and development, from athletics, and from marketing and communications. And we believe it will set the tone and the direction for the next five to 10 years. And so, over the course of the, the next month, we will be soliciting your input on that plan. And then lastly, I want to mention that on Monday and Tuesday of this week, we had a mid-cycle accreditation visit, which was a follow-on from our original accreditation visit three years ago. And there were two accrediters on campus, they met with a variety of individuals on campus, and the feedback we received was incredibly enlightening. I mean, we, it was extremely positive, and once we get the final report back from them, we will provide that copy to you and post it on our website, that will be available for everybody. But it was a very, very good visit, and I'd like to publicly thank Karen Rupel and Lita Burns for their efforts in making that happen, and all of the faculty and staff who participated in helping us get to that level with accreditation. That concludes my report. Mr. Chair, unless you have some questions?
No, that wasn't as short as John's, though.
Oh, darn. Okay.
No, if you want to move on to the next agenda item, unless there are some questions on the Reduction in Force Policy.
You bet. This is for the first reading of the proposed reduction in force policy, and as everyone is aware, this policy has been deliberated, modified, looked at, and worked on over the past roughly five years. And what had happened last year is that I met with the Staff Assembly, the Faculty Assembly, and the College Senate, and we looked at revising and putting in place a policy that met the needs of faculty and staff, as well as the board. In November 2015, the board held a workshop to further review and discuss the proposal, and a recommendation was made to combine the proposed policy with the procedure, which was an unusual precedent, but nonetheless, we did that. In December 2015, the, a combined proposal dated December 9, 2015, was presented to the board and made available for employee review. In January 2016, the board held another workshop during which employee input on the combined proposal was received, and the board agreed the proposal would be brought up for its first reading. And so, the, the proposed policy that you have in your packet is a combination of work by the faculty and staff, and the Board of Trustees, and the input that was provided by the staff and the faculty in particular can be found on the pink section of the tab. And the concerns raised were that, were the issue of non-faculty will be impacted, excuse me, non-tenured faculty will be impacted prior to tenured faculty, and that the provisions of this new proposed policy are not to be used for the sole purpose of terminating employees for substandard performance. And then, an area that was of concern to the staff was that the removal of the bumping rights clause within the policy. And those concerns, those changes are in the policy that is before you, and I think this is a, a good policy that meets the needs not only of the board, but administration, faculty, and staff.
Thank you. With that, that...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Kristi.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to pass this policy on for first reading, but part of my motion is, and I, I could have swore we went over this, and that I made a motion on this already. I want, I don't want to change one word, I'm not proposing any of that, but I absolutely believe that we should separate out the policy and procedure. I thought we talked about that, but it's very unusual, it's our only policy, that procedures combined, and it, and it sets a very bad precedent. And so, I want to separate that out, and I have a suggestion to do that. Right on the back of page two, where it says RIF principles, it should say RIF Principles and Procedures, and this should go in the procedure, and then the rest would be in policy. So that is my motion. We move forward with first reading with those changes.
Well, I think we, you need to be a little bit more definitive, so I know what we're voting on, I'm afraid.
Well, I'm, I'm voting to pass this policy that's been looked at, and looked at, and looked at, and all finally agreed to, but I want to separate out the procedures from the policy. That's just not the norm.
You want to take them out of what we're passing?
And put them in the procedures.
So you want, you want to take off everything beyond where it says RIF principles?
Yeah, we'll keep them, but they will just be in the procedure, accompanying procedures to the policy, not combined.
So you want, but you want to remove it from the policy?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second for that?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay. Discussion?
Yep. Because I'm looking at page four, where it says procedure. So Kristi, help us with...
Where are you looking at that?
Yellow page four.
Sure, but basically...
There, it says no accompanying procedures for this policy.
That's because it's been written into the policy.
Right. So now, that would go away.
Right.
And where would, how do we know what the procedures are?
You'd start right here. They're, they wouldn't change, they would just accompany the policy, not be written into the body of the policy. And so, it would be right where it says RIF principles and procedures.
I did that, and wrote in procedure. But that then leads to me that the procedure and the principles are all on the next, succeeding pages.
They would accompany the policy, they would not be written into the policy, just like every other policy we have.
My difficulty with that, Kristi, quite frankly, is, and the reason I made the suggestion in the first place that we combine them, is we have no control over policies.
Over procedure.
Over procedures, excuse me. Yes, you're right.
Right.
And that anytime afterwards, the policy or the procedure can change. And I, this, I think, these are very important protections, I think, that I would like to see built in to the procedure, so that, they always come before the board if there's going to be any change in them, as opposed to a procedure which can be changed without the, without the acknowledgement of the board. So, what you're, what you're suggesting is, quite frankly, something that's complicated enough that I think we probably have to send it back and, and separate them out, and have a procedure, and have a policy, because it may need to be written with regard to reference to things that are in the procedure that are now being taken out. Quite frankly, I like it the way it is, because, as I've indicated before, I think this is such an important protection for everybody, that it should be something that the board keeps control over, in the detail that it's in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not interested in sending this back. If we delay this any further, faculty will be off-campus, they won't have a chance to review it, and we've delayed it far enough. We're all in agreement. I would, I have, I will withdraw that motion with a second proposal.
The second withdrawn? Okay.
Thank you. This proposal is that we go forward with first reading tonight, and then we review this... this a year from now, just to analyze whether procedure should be combined with policy, not to analyze the actual agreements.
Okay. Is there a second?
I think I'm seconding that, because what I heard was, this goes ahead, and we come back and look at it next year to see if it works.
To see if, if procedure combined with policy is maybe something we don't want to be doing, but we've got a year to evaluate it.
So that, I, I second that, because I think it buys us the time we need to see if it works, but it gets us going, which we've been pretty slow on doing.
Any other comments? Again, I, I'm trying to simplify things, not necessarily disagree with you, quite frankly, but to put in the motion that we're going to see it a year from now makes it part of the policy, and I'm wondering if we can't just pass the policy and put it on the agenda a year from now?
Okay.
Without making it something that's part of, you know, complicating the policy itself.
Certainly. I would ask that our clerk keep record of that and alert us.
Right.
A year from now.
So the motion is just a poli, first reading to pass?
Pass first reading, as written.
Right. Do you have a second to that?
I'll second that.
Any more discussion?
How you doing down there?
All. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. So first reading passes as submitted, with the request that it be placed on the agenda a year from now for review.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I can now see the light at the end of the tunnel.
And it's not a train coming through the tunnel.
Our next agenda item is tenure for academic year 2015-16. Dr. Lita Burns. One of these really fun activities that we get to get involved in, in this process.
Chairman Howard, members of the board, President Dunlap, Mr. Lyons, colleagues and guests. I have to say that the April board meeting is my favorite meeting of the Board of Trustees for North Idaho College. And with all due respect to my colleague, Mr. Martin, it has nothing to do with the wonderful spreadsheets you'll see in his budget presentation. Tonight, I have the honor and the privilege of presenting the, our tenure candidates. I would like to invite the candidates that are here this evening to come stand with me.
So we got a new one. Let's just wind out.
Maureen, you're hiding behind the chart there. I can't see you.
The faculty being presented tonight has spent the past three and a half years in probationary status, working towards achieving tenure. During their first three years of teaching at NIC, the candidates have been evaluated each semester by a faculty evaluation team and by their respective division chairs. The faculty evaluation team consists of at least two faculty, one faculty from the tenure candidates' division and one faculty from another division. Tenure candidates are also required to get student evaluations in every course section they teach throughout the probationary period, so a minimum of six semesters. At the end of the first and second academic year, the faculty evaluation team and the division chair meet to discuss the candidate's teaching and progress in the tenure process. Based on discussion, the candidate is provided a formative evaluation. The candidate's peers provide constructive feedback on the ways to improve teaching and learning. And at the end of the third year of the probationary period, the candidate is provided a summative evaluation. The candidate is also required to provide a self-evaluation at the end of each academic year. The self-evaluation must include the candidate's assessment of progress they are making in demonstrating the eligibility for tenure and performance as outlined in the teaching focus policy. In the fall semester of the fourth year of the tenure process, members of the faculty evaluation team and the division chair provide a letter of recommendation for the candidate to the tenure committee. The candidate is required to maintain a portfolio of all the evaluations and the recommendations they have received throughout the probationary period. The portfolios are submitted to the tenure committee for review. The tenure committee makes a recommendation for or against tenure and provides a written recommendation to the division chair and to the vice president for instruction. As the vice president for instruction, I have the opportunity to really get to know the faculty by my thorough review of their portfolio. Reviewing the portfolios is no easy task. I read every evaluation and every student comment provided in the portfolio. The task is time-consuming, but the reward of this work is worth every minute spent. I am able to learn in great detail about the amazing teaching they have provided to the students, the professional development in which they have engaged, and the contributions they have provided to the community of North Idaho College. You know, I'm typically not long-winded, but I think the reminder of the rigor of tenure, the tenure process is extremely important. Equally important is the acknowledgement of the time, effort, and energy each of these individuals have put into achieving recommendations for the conferral of tenure. So I am pleased to present to you the faculty being considered for conferral of tenure. If you would just take a step forward and I call your name, I'd appreciate it. Erin Singes, modern language instructor from the English and Humanities Department. Dr. Brad Coder, anthropology instructor from Social and Behavioral Science Division. Scott Estes, modern language instructor from English and Humanities Division. John May, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, and refrigeration instructor from the Trades and Industry Division. Kristi Mendoza, business administration instructor from the Business and Professional Programs Division. Stephen Schlaugh, automotive technology instructor from Trades and Industry Division. Maureen Steiner, sociology instructor from the Social and Behavioral Sciences Division. President Dunlap and I are requesting the board consider a motion to approve tenure beginning fall 2016 for the faculty members presented. Any questions?
Thank you. You come, we need a motion from the board.
I think we're probably going to fight over it.
Yeah.
No, let's all do it together.
I think we're all in shock up here.
We're delighted, yep. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve tenure for the beginning fall 2016 for the faculty members presented.
I'd second that motion.
All right. Any discussion?
Congratulations.
Other than congratulations.
Bravo. Well done.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is the first reading for the fiscal year seven, 2017 general fund budget. Chris Martin.
Chairman Howard, members of the board, guests, colleagues, everyone excited about numbers. The FY 2017 budget proposal for North Idaho College presented to the board for their review and discussion tonight.
They must not like numbers.
And there are some who are not as excited about this as I am.
Shocking.
So FY 17, budget development and planning, how we came to this place tonight, just spent a few minutes here. It was developed with a focus on the institution's core themes, incorporating the impact of our enrollment trend, incorporating three-year trend reviews of all expenses line by line in every division. It was focused on capturing general fund expense reductions wherever possible and incorporating the beginning of institutional optimization. The budget as proposed to the board tonight is proposed as a balanced budget. It's proposed with no tax increase, no proposed tuition increase for in-district students. It includes a fee holiday for accident insurance, which will affect all students. That is a fee that's charged on the first credit for every student who takes classes in North Idaho College. The budget represents a 2.57% increase over fiscal year 2016. Now we're getting into the details. Yes, sir.
Yes, go ahead.
Chris, one thing I would, would appreciate, if, if it's not too much trouble, we had the, what you gave us before, we've looked at, and I know there's been some small tweaks and changes. Would you be so kind as to point those out to us as we go along?
Absolutely.
Because I'm kind of trying to mirror from our, my notes and then what we did.
We're going to go through those notes.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Just wanted to hit the high points here.
No worries.
It was forecast, we're forecasting a 6% reduction in enrollment for next fiscal year. And so, the board will remember that last year, we forecasted a 10% decline in enrollment. In actuality, we came in between 7 and 8% this fiscal year, right in that line. And so, looking at our continual enrollment trend, we are seeing this decline in enrollment level out. And so, this next year, we're forecasting that as a 6% decline in enrollment. With that, we factored in a reduction in operating expenses, and I would like to thank my colleagues, Sarah Garcia specifically, as well as all the division chairs and the department managers, who were so gracious in, once again, going through their budgets line by line this year. We were able to reduce operating expenses year over year by almost $900,000. And so, I wanted to highlight their good work there. The budget also incorporates bringing online the new CTE facility and making sure that we've accounted for all the needs with bringing that facility onboard. And the proposal includes a 3% change in employee compensation for full-time employees.
Should we ask questions as we go, or should we wait?
I'm happy for you to ask questions.
Do you have a question?
Yes, sir, I do. And I may be premature, so if I am, because you know I've brought up an additional issue regarding the adjunct and the part-time. Will we address that? Because I know we've got some supplemental information on that.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Trustee Van Ducci, we provided the impact of the increase for adjuncts and part-time under separate cover.
For the one in the three percent.
Absolutely. It is not included in this proposal, but we're happy to do that on the direction of the board tonight. So with that, I will refer to your packet. So on page two of the budget summary is a review of the general fund operating budget considerations for fiscal year 17 compared to fiscal year 16. You'll note that the enrollment decrease of 6% is a roughly a $989,000 impact to revenue year over year. Also included in that is a proposed 5%, excuse me, $5 per credit increase for all non-district students, which will provide $130,422 in revenue, and we are proposing a 15% increase in dual credit enrollment, which will net revenue for next fiscal year of $109,000.
Got a question on that, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you, Chris, on, on that dual, dual credit, which is dual enrollment.
Yes.
So that means those are high school students who are now taking classes here. And what, remind me again, what we, what they pay to take a credit here?
They pay $65 a credit hour.
And do they pay it, or does the school district pay it?
They get support from the state in the form of fast-forward dollars that pay not all of that $65, but, but pays most of that $65. It depends on the amount of credits the students are taking. They're each allowed a dollar amount, and that changes every year. It's available from fast-forward, and that has been, that has been changing, which is a good thing, allowing more benefit to more students.
And just to follow up, then, the 15% increase you're suggesting for next year, what was it last year? What's our trend on this?
That's where, that is, that is a very bright story, a very good story for North Idaho College. It has been double-digit increases for the past three years now.
And in the future?
In the future, I don't suspect that we will continue to have the level of increase that we have had. We've really, the dual credit and outreach operation has done an incredible job of going in and meeting our high schools. And so, we were not probably doing the job that we wanted to be doing several years ago, but that team has really transformed our emphasis on dual credit. And so, we've had, last year, if I'm not mistaken, we had a 25% increase. That's what we budgeted for, for dual credit. We've ramped that down slightly this fiscal year to 15%. We probably have another year of double-digit growth in dual credit, but I don't expect we'll continue at double digits beyond the next two years.
One observation on that, then, on whatever the public school enrollment is would be the other factor, because if there are more students in the public school system, we could get some bonus from that. On the other hand, or not on the other hand, but in addition, what a great success story that I think we as a board have wanted to have happen was, the more folks that get into this, experiencing the community college glory, joy, and hard work, are more likely to stay with us, which is back to our counseling and, and student advising to help people be successful. So I was glad to see the 15%, because I didn't remember last year. It sounds like that's still growing, and you've identified there what income it generates.
Todd, are you completed?
I'm completed.
Todd, did you have a question?
I did, just real quick. As we're seeing this increase in the dual credit enrollment, and they're getting the money from the state program, as we're doing the tuition increases in this particular case for out-of-district, the $5, then are we essentially not having any impact on the dual enrolled kids, because they're primarily from our local Lakeland, Timberlake, Corlaine, post-fall school districts?
That's primarily the case. That's correct. We do also charge dual credit students who are out of Cootney County, the out-of-district bump. So they are actually using the liquor funds, going and getting the out-of-district tuition portion covered by their county of residence. So in-district students pay $65 in tuition, out-of-district students pay the out-of-district additional $50.
Not enough to be burdensome, I'm guessing. Do we have many of those dual enrollment?
We do. That's where some of our most recent growth has come from, is outside of really reaching out into Sandpoint and the Silver Valley specifically have had great response to dual credit offerings.
I just, okay, I just hope we're sensitive to what the price point is.
Absolutely.
These folks. Especially when you start talking to more rural areas and the valley that's had some little bit of economic challenges and things like that.
Absolutely.
Okay. Do you want to proceed?
Absolutely. As we go looking, continue to look at revenue, there, there are so many good success stories this, in this budget, and I just want to highlight a couple of those now. But you'll see the increase in the state general fund year over year was $1.1 million. That's, that's great news. I want to thank you for your time that you spend in Boise, and give kudos to my colleague, Mr. Browning, who makes that trip regularly. It was great to see the state support at that level this fiscal year. Another substantial change you'll see is in CTE funding, $584,000 increase year over Also, you will see the new property on the rolls estimated for this next fiscal year. We've kept that flat with FY 16, the actual, that's $337,000 of new property on the rolls. This represents a 2.57% increase in revenue year over year, or $1.1 million. Just moving on to page three, briefly want to point out the impact of the budget without any salary impact, without any salary impact taken into account, looking at our operating costs for the general fund year over year. After we took out all the expense reductions that were able to be produced, it went up by $420,000. Again, that is primarily in response to the state funding that we received. And so, just to detail the state funding, some of the substantial increases there were the occupancy costs for the new current technical education facility. That was $600,000. Other things to note were, that were significant, was $133,000 for complete college Idaho initiatives. And then, in the CTE category, substantial support for new faculty positions, 6.5 faculty positions in support of primarily advanced manufacturing, surgical technology, as well as web. And so, those were really nice additions to be able to further support our instructional programs here at North Idaho College.
Question on this, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If we're working off of... If we're working off of, we are working off our paper, my page four is what you're talking off of?
Page, the notes on the detail of the state appropriation is on the bottom of page two?
Page?
Page two.
Right, okay, because then that chart that you have up there is equivalent of our page four?
Uh, page three.
No, that's four.
That's four.
I apologize.
Okay, my-
Thank you. I'm sorry, I flipped ahead. Including the salary impact, absolutely, page four.
Couple lines are missing off the bottom of that, Chris. Is there a second slide that will give us the student aid and transfers lines?
The chart on the screen doesn't have the categories, it just lists the amount.
There it is, okay.
Okay, is there a question? No. Any question? Okay.
So again, total expenditures with the salary impact, the overall increase for the budget was 2.57%. The difference that you'll see there at the bottom is there's $4,235 that were not categorically spent. We always have a little wiggle room, that is a very little wiggle room, $4,235, but very, very close to every dollar with a purpose, every purpose with a dollar. And so, the impact there again is the $1.1 million increase, and you can see how that fell out with the salary impact.
Question, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Tell me what transfers means, the last line on the page?
Transfers is the support that the college provides to other operations, such, the service operations, such as copy and mail service, security, parking, athletics.
All athletics?
Not, well, all of those things together as part of the transfer. Things that the general fund does support, but that sit in another fund, such as a service fund.
And the other one I last asked about is public service?
Public service, in this case, that represents the support the college is required to provide to offer the Idaho Small Business Development Center. So in offering that, the college, part of the grant requires the college to put up $49,000 in support of that program. And so, we are able to offer the Idaho Small Business Development Center to everyone in Region 1 for $49,000. The rest of it is funded through a grant from, administered by Boise State University.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Chris.
The next page is a historical trend document that just shows our revenue and enrollment history over time, as well as the percent of support that we receive from each of our funding sources. And so, on the left, you'll notice that we, this fiscal year, 27% is coming from state funding, 12% of our revenue is coming from CTE, 33% is coming from local property taxes, and 28% is coming from tuition and fees.
Yes.
On this chart, then, thanks, Chris. The traditional percentage of sources of revenue was about, it used to be a third, a third, a third. So what we're seeing here is for predictive, predictive for 17, the state has helped us more, a little bit more than usual.
That's correct.
The property taxes are about the same, 33, and tuition fees at 28%. Always looking at, at that balance, I think we as a board need to think through our sources and, and I know it's varied over the years, but not much. So I was just, just monitoring that balance of one-third, one-third, one-third. If that's the right balance now, we'll see it here.
Chair Howard, if I may, this is, this is an unusual year with the essentially 10% increase in state appropriation this fiscal year, provided that little bump in the state revenue line that we don't, we have not seen in the recent past, where it's, it's getting a little bit more above the 34, 35% that we traditionally seen. And that was a welcome change this fiscal year to see that level of support from, from the state.
I'm sorry, Chris, let me finish up. On the, the CTE funding, that percentage which we've been struggling with is looking like it's the largest since 2010. Now, my-
That's correct.
Which I think is good news. That's part of what we've been struggling with, was how can we provide all the CTE things, and that came from the state to help us do it. Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Well, we were in danger instead of this year. This year is much better news, but we look like we're state-sponsored instead of state-supported, and there's a big difference there. So I would like to ask Mark Browning, which I know he does this all the time, but if you could just let our delegation know that we appreciate the new trend, we need to keep going in this new trend, or we will just be state-sponsored. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Chris, I have a question on, on the, the funding from the state, including the CTE funding. There was an allocation for operational cost for the new CTE building. Is that in, in these numbers here?
Yes, sir, it is.
All right, and that's one of the reasons for the significant increase this year, is the operational cost for our new CTE facility?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Howard, if I may, also a significant reason that the state funding is where it is at is because the state did not charge us the enrollment workload adjustment this fiscal year, which was essentially a gift on top of a gift this fiscal year. The impact of that would have essentially zeroed out the, the allocation, the appropriation we received for occupancy costs.
As I understand it, there's a kind of a, maybe not complicated for some, but complicated for me, formula where the state would claw back certain things depending upon the number of students we had, and when we're on an enrollment increase, it was great. When we have an enrollment decrease, they want some of the money back, and they've, they've did not take all that money back this year. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, and that's another reason why we see this, the dollars that we see, is they, they didn't claw back the money as they have in years past.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So if I could just point out one thing, on that line, the enrollment line at the top, which is what we've really been focusing on, you'll notice that our enrollment is essentially back at the 2009 level, which is where we were before the, the boom. And on the right-hand side of the graph, hopefully you're seeing what we're seeing, which is the decline is leveling out. And so, there are a number of things at play as we go into the next fiscal year that we did not account for. So in an effort to be conservative, one thing that I hope this entire campus is, is very happy about is the opening of the new career and technical education facility. And by the sheer virtue of opening that state-of-the-art facility, we anticipate that it will impact CTE enrollments. That is not accounted for in the enrollment trend. Do we expect to see an impact simply because we have more space, it's a state-of-the-art facility? We do. If, if we don't leverage that as an enrollment asset, then shame on us. That, that work is being done right now by Doug and his crew now, but that is not factored into the trend. So just want to make sure that I'm clear. We took the most conservative approach yet again. That has served us well the last several years, and we expect it will serve us well again this upcoming year. If we can move to page six. Thank you. Just a quick review of where we're falling, in line with our peer institutions, as a comparison of resident tuition and fees per semester. You'll see the increase there, as well as the five-year average. CSI is, estimated increase is 7.7%, North Idaho College, 2.3%. That reflects the impact of the rec center fee, and that's what's driving that, that increase, is you graciously approved a fee, the students voted to support the Student Wellness and Recreation Center, and that's what's driving that impact. So in planning for the budget this year, we wanted to be very cognizant of the fee increase that was already coming when we reviewed the potential for tuition increases. Moving on down, our three-year average was 3.1%. We don't have any word yet from College of Western Idaho, Spokane, 3.6, Lewiston Clark, 2%, BSU, 3%, U of I Moscow, 3%, ECU, we don't have any word on that yet, and 2.5% for Idaho State University. So we feel that we are really valuing the impact that we have on students and really taking into account the impact of the student recreation and wellness fee. Page seven just shows you an impact for a full-time student and what the impact is on tuition and fees for a full-time student in district, out-of-district, Washington State residents, students who are part of the Western undergraduate exchange rate, and then for out-of-state international students, what the impact of the total tuition and fees is on a per-credit basis, as well as what the increase is year over year.
Chris, can I ask you a question on the tuition? We talk about the dual-credit students, and some of those courses are taught on the high school campus, some of them are taught here. Is there a tuition differential for that?
There, there is not currently.
Okay. And is the tuition that we charge then the same that we charge the other students?
The, the standard rate currently, there's not differential for dual-credit students, regardless of whether they take classes on campus or on a high school campus. They're charged $65 a credit hour.
Okay. Which would be less than what we charge for the, our students here?
That is correct.
$133 per credit.
That is correct.
Okay. We, I, I just didn't see a line item for the dual-credit category, or, and so we can sort of judge where that's moving?
Absolutely. I think that's a great suggestion, and I'll be happy to add that.
Okay, thank you.
If I may also, Chair Howard, next fiscal year, the administration is moving to charge dual-credit students who attend on campus the RAC rate, the same rate that an in-district student would be charged, so that we don't have any students who are sitting side-by-side paying different rates for classes that are taught on the NIC campus.
Okay. Thank you.
Page eight just breaks out the, the proposed impact, showing total revenue for North Idaho College of $45,444,000. Tuition and fees coming in at 12.3, the state general fund allocation 11.9, the career and technical education allocation 5.1 million. Property taxes coming in at 14.7, and then the other revenue, county tuition payments, $759,000, miscellaneous tax receipts, $456,000, and then other revenue, $105,000. Bring us back to the total of $45,444, excuse me, $45 million, $444,000. The operating expense line, salaries at $23.4 million, benefits at $7.9 million, equipment $209,000, and then general M&amp;O expenses 13.7. So again, you will see of the $45 million, $31 million is for our human resources.
Is for what?
Our human resources, our faculty and staff. The next page you see there is the plant fund. There is no change year over year. I would like to share one thing. The total did not change, but what did change was the addition of a furniture replacement fund for instructional furniture in the total of $115,690. This will allow us, like you have so graciously done in the past with the equipment replacement fund, the computer equipment replacement fund, allowing us to maintain instructional furniture across campus at a standard that we want to be at.
Chris, are any of these items reflect the, the cap, it says capital, investment reserve. Is that the fund that we've been using for the CTE facility?
Yes, sir.
Right. And there was some discussion, I think, that maybe we ought to do some, take some formal action to create a fund for that?
Yes, sir.
And what would you like to see, if we took a formal action, what would you like to see by way of definition, so, so that has the requisite formation?
We would like to see, or request the board to consider setting aside a board-designated fund that the board has direction of, that we could not use for another purpose. It's board-designated for a specific purpose, in this case, capital investment. And that, that would be set aside specifically at the request of the board and can only be used by permission of the board.
Okay. What I'd like to request that you do, if, if you could formulate a potential motion that, that has in it the characteristics and the limitations and suggestions that you have, so we can address it at the next meeting and, and see if we want, we want to accept your suggestions or change them, but get something specific to work from in terms of a motion. Could you do that for us?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
The next page, page 10, clearly is that, is that capital investment reserve. And so, this is the piece that the board has asked us to account for separately for the specific purpose of building capital investment. And we don't have a CTE update tonight, and I will be brief. I just want to thank you again for your vision and your direction and your stewardship to allow us to use those funds and complete that project with no impact to taxes or, or levying a bond. I really think that has been really, really a prudent decision, and we appreciate that. This shows where we are at with that. If you look at FY17, you'll see the $2.5 million coming into that, and then we will be running that account down as we finish construction here in FY17.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Since we're talking about your, your directive and this capital investment reserve, what I would like to see that come forward with the motion is I would like, I guess a comparison between, CWI won't be relevant, but a comparison with CSI and whether they're in the business of building buildings. That's the state's obligation. We've kind of put ourselves in a position, we just are in a position, where we're doing it now, and I, I guess some of the discussion we'll have later, but I would like to see is CWI putting aside money just particularly for buildings rather than considering it their general fund?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Chris, go ahead.
Page 11 just shows the employee and credit student FTE history over the past 10 years and where we are. The yellow line, they're representing staff and admin, the green line representing faculty, and the red line representing part-time faculty. The increase that you're seeing in that green line of full-time faculty is that 6.5 FTE that we received from the state this year in support of career and technical education. So that is the increase you're seeing in full-time faculty. Those are completely funded by an appropriation from Division of Career and Technical Education. And the rest of your packet is information on fees, grants, and service funds. Mr. Chair, I will stand for questions or take your direction on how we want to proceed.
Okay. Are there any questions? While you're thinking of them, I have a question. We've had some discussion in the past about, not the capital reserve, but our reserve that we, and I can't remember the name of the fund, but I think we're at about 30% now.
Correct.
What do you call that fund?
Just the general fund.
General fund reserve. And there's been some discussions of the, that it may be appropriate to move some of those funds because they are larger than, I mean, the auditors, I think, recommend something like 15%.
Correct.
And we're at 30%.
Yes, sir.
And the higher our reserve beyond the 15%, it may have, impact our credit rating?
Our ability to go forward with future requests for funding from the state legislature in particular, if we are sitting on too much reserve cash.
Okay. So one of the, one of the ideas was to refund the capital reserve fund by moving it from the general fund over to the capital reserve fund, so we've, we've refunded some of that.
Absolutely.
Reins.
I'm not sure I followed you. So you move it to the capital, capital improvement fund?
Yeah.
Not the capital reserve? You're taking it out of the capital reserve, putting it into capital improvement?
Yeah.
Is that what you're talking about?
Give us the names so that we're-
To move from the general fund balance into the capital investment fund because we were able to fund the CTE building with those funds through FY, end of FY17, we'll have that. The, the actual expenses are all falling in FY16 and FY17, and so we've, we've essentially overdrawn the capital investment reserve fund as we complete construction. And so, one idea would be, we did not go out and seek a tax anticipation note or other financing because we had so much cash on hand to go ahead and fund that up. financing because we had so much cash on hand to go ahead and fund that up ourselves and not seek financing, gap financing for that construction piece. Because we're going to essentially be overdrawing that account for 12 months, we could move general fund money into the capital investment reserve and go ahead and start replenishing that fund.
Okay.
The reason I brought that up is I just thought that that might be an appropriate discussion as we go through the budget discussion. What we do with that operational fund, and since it is so highly capitalized, whether there would be some appropriate thing to do with it, and that moving it into the capital reserve fund seemed like an appropriate thing, given what we're doing with the CTE, and also given the fact that if we can build that fund back up again, then we're in a better position to deal with the joint-use facility building that's coming online in about a year. And we've also got those funds coming in from the dedicated taxes every year, but this would be a way to get that fund built back up again so it's operational. So that's my suggestion, is that the... We may want to think about doing that, and if there's any appetite for that, then we could ask Chris, again, to develop some potential motion for us to consider at the next meeting.
And some background information would be great, the specific dollar amount.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
But I don't want to do that if there's no appetite to do it.
Well, it's worth considering.
Yes, sir.
Worth considering.
And I do have, when you're done, a question, too, for Chris.
So do you have a good handle on what we want you to do?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. And the amount that you're going to suggest would be appropriate?
Perfect.
Go ahead, Todd.
Thank you, sir. I actually have a couple, three things. First is a compliment to you and Sarah of pulling out all the PTEs and putting all the CTEs in.
We missed one. We'll get it corrected.
Did well, though. We were kind of joking about that. Two things, though, that jump out at me. One was one of the initiatives that I was spearheading last year, and you've given us the information. I'd like to talk about that for a moment, and then I'll have one more thing, but you've given me the information that I asked for, and I appreciate that. And I guess one of the things that I'm... I'm a guy that's supposedly conservative and never liked to spend money and all the rest of that, but he thinks I vote no on everything. But last year I championed that I thought that the adjunct and part-time faculty should also get an increase. I think sometimes they feel a little bit like they're maybe second-class citizens, and as we've reviewed the history, we've noted that there's been no increase in years for those folks. And even though we have drawn down their numbers somewhat, I still think they're a valuable asset and an important part of the college community. So... And then I had a lot of interesting discussions and was approached over the last year and last year during the process, and even this year already, from a number of folks that had concerns in this area. So as I'm looking at this, you've given us the number that 1% increase for the PT and adjuncts would be $35,654, and 3% to coincide with what the CTE and other instructors are getting, the academic instructors, would be $106,962, under current projections and how we'll use the adjunct and the part-time faculty next year. And I'll shock everybody and everybody watching this, I would like to see us find the money. If we're going to give 3% to the other two, because we've got 3% for CTE from the state, and we've only got 1% from the state for the academic, and so we're pulling 2% out of hide already, which is a far greater number than this $106,000. I think the least we can do is be equitable with our adjunct and part-time faculty and find that $106, and equal them up a 3% too, and let them feel a little bit of love and that they're appreciated. That's just my thought.
I have a quick question, while certainly in total agreement with Todd, but I have a quick question on that. I think it's been quite some time since we've addressed adjunct.
Oh, it's been years.
And I'm curious if you know, I'm hearing there's quite a difference between adjunct pay between us and Spokane Community College, for example, and that could absolutely affect recruiting. So I don't know if that was a motion, Todd.
I didn't know if I got there yet. I was just putting it out there for discussion and some feedback from my fellow board members to see if I had some support on this.
Will you do from me?
Am I out there on a limb, or are we...
Why don't you formulate a motion so we know exactly what we're talking about?
Okay, I'll do that, sir. Trustee Banducci's motion is to propose that we do a 3% raise for the part-time and adjunct faculty to match the 3% that we're doing for the rest of the faculty.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
I second that.
Any discussion? Well, no, is the proposal to get some figures together to see what the impact is going to be?
I know exactly what it is, sir. According to Chris, he's provided a number to me. It's $106,962.
Okay.
So assuming that he can find that money, I guess that'd be the question in the discussion, is is it going to be a problem to find the $106,962?
I think he can find it.
I just want to be clear on what the motion is. Is the motion to do the 3% raise, or is the motion for him to come back on the second reading with an analysis of how that's going to impact the budget? Would you just tell me what your motion is?
You know, you might be correct on that. Thank you for your question, sir. I think it might be more appropriate for my motion to say, I'd like to propose that we investigate doing a 3% raise for the part-time and adjunct faculty and see what the impact on the budget is in preparation for the second reading.
Further discussion?
Yeah, we need a second on that.
Better motion?
Right, well, so we're not in discussion with the first?
I'm sorry. Can I... May I withdraw the first motion?
Sure.
Okay, I'm going to withdraw the first motion. Sorry, Christie. And then I'm going to make the second motion, and Mark's helping me here a little bit.
I like it, but I wanted to tweak it a little.
Okay, well, let's talk. Let's do this. Second it for me, and then let's discuss and maybe we adjust it.
Well, your motion is to have him study the impact of a 3% raise?
Yes, sir.
Okay, for part-time and adjunct, okay. Go ahead, and there's a second.
So I'll second that. And then discussion is, I would actually like to see, rather than investigate it, I would like to see him come back with a second reading with it built into the budget proposal.
If he can find... Yes, that's kind of where I was trying to head, and maybe I was driving it with the first motion too much and the second one not enough, so...
So now you're going to withdraw that other motion?
I can do that, too.
Yeah.
The point is, Chris, brother, find me the $106,000 so we can take care of these good people.
All right.
And not just me, I mean, for the board. You know what I mean?
Okay, so as I understand it, Chris, the motion is to build in to the proposed budget 3% raise for the adjunct and part-time faculty and reflect that in the... As a change in the second reading?
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay. And there was seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, did we need... Judy, do you want more discussion?
Just to confirm that the number?
Yeah, we're just putting it in the budget, putting it in his proposal.
But I want to know what the number is.
It was 106... Here's what the number that Chris gave us, $106,962, and that was for the 3%. Now, again, Judy, we're using an exact number all the way down to 962, but it's a projected number based on what we think the utilization will be for part-time and adjunct faculty. That number could actually vary slightly up or down, I think that'd be fair to say.
Okay. Anyway.
Thank you.
So we have the motion, we have a second that passed, that you could, should include that in the next budget reading. Okay.
Did you call... Did we vote?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't vote. I thought she was still...
I had a question, but...
You voted yes.
I did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead. Any other questions?
I do have one more thing, I'm sorry. Chris, and you may not want to, because it's built in in the way it uploads into, but you gave us a couple very interesting documents, the projections for monthly income statements, 16, the core lease for 15, and then some very interesting data in here. Is there anything that you'd like to highlight or emphasize out of that, or it just rolls up and that's okay? You know, it was interesting, at least at our level, to see this.
Chairman Howard, Trustee Banducci, as our promise back to the board that we provide quarterly income statements to the board, we just wanted to provide that, especially to help inform the budget discussion. What I would note is that we're right on track with this fiscal year. When you compare us to where we were last year, we're right on track to end the year with positive net income, again, this fiscal year. Our expenses are in line. We continue to see cost savings from a budgeting standpoint in salaries in adjunct employees. That's where a lot of our savings we're seeing come in as far as less expenses compared to budget for last, this current fiscal year.
Any other questions or comments, Judy?
And I came across a note I wrote earlier back on page nine. I don't know if you want to back to that, or you're still in the middle of finishing yourself.
Go ahead.
Okay. Page nine was the plant and fund budget. And on that page, you reminded us about the capital investment reserve. That was the CTE.
Correct.
Which is the same.
Correct.
Above that was rent and the obligations, first line there. And it is reduced a bit, 341 to 321. But I got to thinking, what else do we rent? What I'm thinking about was with the CTE, a lot of our rental costs were going to go down because we had a lot of rental costs for CTE. What other rent... Is this real estate rental cost?
That is correct. So the savings that we're projecting there is the weld shop.
Is the...
The welding facility?
Right. But aren't we, next year, trying to reduce rent in several other places for our programs?
We are absolutely looking at that now. Other places that we did not account for in here but are currently in discussion are the Howard Street lease where outdoor and recreational vehicles is located, the graphic design program, which is located in the River Bend area. Those are the two other leases that we're currently reviewing at this time.
And that would occur all the way through '17?
Those leases are up for renewal at this moment in time, and so with the vacated space in the Headland facility, we're working right now to ensure that we have space for those programs and that the timing works out between the move.
So there's your $106,000.
So there would be cost savings, I think, is what you're saying?
Absolutely. There could be cost savings in that line item. Again, in a conservative approach, we didn't... We knew we'd be out of the weld shop. The other leases, graphic design ends in October, so we've accounted for that for the full year, but there is conversations about where that could be located in space that we currently own.
Todd?
Well, I've got about four comments now. One is I know that graphic design really wants to stay where they're at. Another facility, though, that I think will be looked at, Judy, is the OPRV programs being evaluated, and so there's... We have to see what the disposition of that program is and where it ends up and whether there's additional savings there potentially. I don't know what's going to happen to that program, but I know it's being evaluated.
Chairman Howard?
Yes.
Members of the board, we are looking at that program right now and looking at the costs to move that program, as well as looking at the future plan for that program. At this point in time, one thing that's under consideration is extending the lease on that Howard Street program for one more year as we work through some of the data that's come back from institutional optimization. Frankly, the cost of that lease compared to moving it back to campus, if it only moves for a short period of time, there's not a cost savings there factoring in the move. So there are pieces of that program that we're reviewing at this time.
Yes.
And I want to emphasize again, graphic design really wants to stay where they're at. I do want to thank you for getting some of the information that I know particularly was of interest to Trustee Nielsen, the comparison with CWI and CSI, and some of the classroom space comparisons, so we can see some of that. And he is obviously not here tonight, so he's not able to engage in the discussion tonight as part of the first reading, so I'm sure you guys are going to make sure he has all this information so he can have a chance to look at it and digest it and have some abilities for some input and everything prior to the second reading.
Absolutely.
I would like to make sure we do that. It's a courtesy to him.
Any other questions for Chris? Yes, Judy?
In thinking through rent, it's really, as you describe here, the rent may be for some programs we need to do, and I understand the logistics of the cost to move exceeds the value of what you've achieved. But also, and some folks were asking me today, because we're moving out to CTE, we should have more space on campus to backfill into. Again, not only trying to reduce rent, but also provide more program opportunities. And that, I'm sure, has been factored in. Do we sometime, at some point, from the leadership here, have an update on how that backfill and what happens next, just for both us and the public to know what's happening with their dollars?
Chairman Howard, Trustee Meyer, that... Part of that plan is included in the institutional master plan that you were given as far as some timelines and what's happening there. I would speak directly to the fact that we're working very hard to engage the entrepreneur community, the entrepreneur programs, and provide space for them. Those are also located offsite, and so to bring all of that together in one place, that's part of the Headland conversation that's currently occurring, as well as expanding space for current programs on campus, as well as support services for students. We will be happy to engage in that in more detail.
Which I think, as you say, comes about with a master planning program, which is the facilities part, but as you've heard me say before, we want the programs to drive facilities, not the facilities to drive programs. So that'd be an exciting time as we all of us together. And it really sets a tone, then, for some of the plant reserve and what we have coming up for facilities. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Chris? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes the first reading of the general budget for fiscal year '17. Our next...
Mr. Chair, for you, the timeline is we see this again next month.
Yes.
And then, because that's May, we really need to have it pretty much in place?
The second reading will be up for consideration next month.
Mm-hmm. And if, at that time, it could be approved?
Whatever changes you want to build into it by way of amendments, we can do at that time. He'll have the information that we've asked him for this evening.
Yep. Because the logic is have it finished in May so that as we begin the new operating year, we're all in place.
Yes.
Thank you.
Spring enrollment report. Graydon Stanley.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, President Dunlap, colleagues and guests here tonight. It's my pleasure to come and talk to you about the spring enrollment report for 2016 per your request from the last meeting. We had a handout for you at the last meeting. There was a request made to present that to the board and publicly tonight, so that's what I brought forward. I hope you've had a chance to view that report. I would remind you that the date that we take a snapshot of where our numbers are at has changed over the years. It used to be within the first 10 days of enrollment, and you might recall about two years ago, we changed to an October 15th reporting date for fall semester and a March 15th date for spring semester. So the numbers that you'll see tonight are as of March 15th and in comparison to March 15th the previous year, so from spring semester to spring semester. Many of the questions that you had, part of the discussion relative to the budget, I think, will be informed by some of the information that you're about to see tonight. Want to talk, first of all, about total enrollment. You can see the numbers from 2012 through 2016. You've known about the decrease in enrollment. I would tell you that the head count, then, from spring semester to spring semester is down 4.07%, and the FTE is down 6.72%. That decline was expected, as you recall, hearing again tonight from Vice President Martin, we are projecting that a 10% decrease, we... FTE, we performed at a 6.72, so while we are not pleased about the decrease, it's better performance than what was projected. Want to talk to you about a shift that we've seen in our full-time to part-time student ratio, and that's what this reflects, and you can see where the lines cross over in that 2013 to 2014. The red line is the part-time enrollment, the green line is the full-time enrollment. So we made that change. We've seen an increase, obviously, in part-time students. This shift in real numbers is actually very slight, although it appears to be greater by the graph. It's amounting to approximately a drop of about one credit per student over the last four years.
Mr. Chair, a question.
Yes.
Would that affect part-time faculty, adjunct faculty? If the people are part-time, does that change?
It doesn't affect that enrollment any different than overall enrollment, whether it's part-time enrollment or full-time enrollment, it wouldn't affect that any differently.
Thank you.
Graydon, before you go on, we're seeing more and more emphasis on the concept of completion, and as you start getting more part-time students in a community college setting and fewer full-time students, and how that part-time runs out, and does it meet the criteria for completion that's being created or the definitions? Do you have any insight on that?
Certainly. Most of the research that we've seen indicates that the longer, of course, a student is at the college, the less likely they are to complete that degree. So it's certainly a concern for us that as more students are part-time, and it extends that length of time to completion or graduation, that they're at greater risk of achieving that goal. A number of our enrollment management strategies, and I think you'll see as we move forward, potentially even the pricing of our tuition and fee, might provide incentives for students taking more credits, even with the use of our scholarship, our grant aid, and other strategies to help students move along in a more timely fashion so that the likelihood[1785.08] strategies to help students move along in a more timely fashion so that the likelihood that they'll complete is increased.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Joe.
The genesis of that question is precisely why we implemented the voluntary framework of accountability, because the voluntary framework of accountability tracks a cohort over a six-year period of time, recognizing that students stop in and stop out of community colleges much greater than they do at universities.
Todd.
Graydon, a question for you, sir. As I look at these trend lines and I notice the relative stability of the part-time line, is that due to it being bolstered by the increase in the dual enrollment? Because most of the dual enrollment would fall under part-time.
It certainly is, Trustee Banducci. But you'll note as I report on dual credit in some following slides that that's starting to even out. You might recall in some previous reports, we talked about the head count of dual-credit students was going up dramatically, but the FTE associated with that was not growing at the same rate.
Right.
It was due to the lack of availability of multiple classes within the high schools for dual-credit students to take. As instruction's been able to increase the number of classes available in the high school or here on campus to dual-credit students, you're going to see it's not only driven up the head count of dual-credit, it has also now driven up the FTE. And you'll see that evening out and we'll see that trend moving forward where FTE will grow at a similar rate.
If I may, sir, follow on question?
Yes.
Is a dual enrollment student for, to be categorized, are they treated any differently? I mean, we consider 12 credits to be full-time on campus. Is it still 12 credits for a dual-enrolled person with these extended and additional offerings? Is that an achievable number for them while still in the high school environment?
Per semester, Trustee Banducci, I don't believe that would be the case. That'd be real rigorous. I think it's exceptional that that occurs. So it's not very often. Most of the time, we'll see that that credit-taking behavior is generally around six credits, two classes per semester.
Okay. So it's helping our FTE, but still they're going to all technically be part-time, classifying them consistently with what we would do if they were on campus.
That's likely to be the case.
Judy.
Thinking about dual enrollment, how does that work for the CTE program? Certainly, the geography will be much, potentially, much different for folks to dual-enroll through CTE programs?
I'll answer that. In our career and technical education programs, those are block programs. In other words, a student comes in and doesn't take a series of maybe five courses. They enroll in a block program that meets, let's say, from 7:30 in the morning until 2:00 in the afternoon.
Every day.
And so the opportunities for a part-time student to attend a career and technical education program is very limited unless we run evening courses or courses and programs specifically geared towards students that may be working adults or students that may be enrolled in high school. And that's different than the way that transfer programs are structured and offered.
But doesn't that lead us to, will we be looking at providing those kinds of, particularly if the facilities aren't used in the evenings, providing those kinds of classes as we determine what the marketplace and employers need? I'm sure we keep on the radar screen for that.
I'm going to ask our VP of Instruction to talk about that into the future.
Chairman Howard, Trustee Meyer, yes, I believe if I'm understanding your question correctly, we are working hard at this point on trying to align the programming, the curriculum, for example, at K-Tech to be able to divide those programs up in such a way that we can offer dual-credit in the high schools and have that be transferable to a comparable area of study in the college. So it might not be that the student is taking the entire program block of classes while they are in the high school as dual-credit. But will we ensure that the courses that they are taking are so aligned with our programs here at the college that they will have already completed a number of the credits here at the college? So yes, we are working hard to make sure that alignment exists and so that they can complete in a quicker fashion once they get to be full-time students at the college. Does that answer your question?
Good job. Because I think the whole issue we've had with education is not seat time, but knowledge time. So the sooner we can provide those options to folks, whether they're in the school system with dual enrollment or just folks taking classes at work during the day and can only take those classes at night, is, I'm sure, a juggling challenge we have, but it's one, I think, as a board, we want you to be thinking about. Thank you.
Any other questions, Graydon? Thank you very much. Are you complete?
I have more.
Ah, good.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I would add to that discussion too, and I know you've had a chance to meet most of those people under the direction of Cassie Silvis and Marcy Hoggett and Evan Moore and Diane Holbert and others who work in that advanced opportunities dual-credit arena. They've had, we've moved from what used to be dual-credit for transfer students and then tech prep, you might recall that terminology, for career and technical education students. It's dual-credit for both of those areas now. Evan Moore particularly, I believe, has been focused on behalf of the career and technical division of working with high schools and making available to those students dual-credit in career and technical education areas. So there's more available, more availability than there used to be in the past.
And with our new facility, it should get even better.
Even more, yep.
Okay.
Taking you to the next slide, which is academic programs, as we're talking about academic and career technical. This is academic programs for credit enrollment. We've seen a decline in both our academic and career and technical for-credit enrollment and FTE. We expect to see an increase, obviously, as you heard earlier tonight, in career and technical enrollment for the fall, given the expanded capacity of the new career and technical education facility, as well as some of the offerings through the TAC grant and increases in programs in the health sciences. This program space is going to add to the capacity that students are able to access. This is, and with apologies for the terminology professional and technical, tried to change that today, it was a photograph I couldn't get into, so career and technical for-credit enrollment. You'll note it follows kind of the same pattern as academic, and we think we'll particularly note that change next year with the availability of the facility and the capacity in those programs. And we were just talking to this next slide, which is that celebration we have about dual-credit availability, not only here but across the state for all of our students. Dual headcount, as you look at these numbers, dual-credit headcount grew 22.6%. The FTE increased 25.3%. That's what I was speaking to earlier. This area's seen strong growth over the last several semesters. Last spring, we saw an increase in headcount, but the FTE was flat. This was in large part due to our goal of moving dual-credit students back to their respective high schools. You recall that we made that change, that we wanted those students to be able to stay at their respective high schools. We wanted to be able to deliver more of the coursework at those schools. We've been able to meet that challenge and expand offerings in each of the high schools, making more classes available and driving up those FTE numbers. The institution broadened those class choices and saw a significant jump in the number of credits each student was able to take, as demonstrated by this growth in FTE to 25.3% from spring semester to spring semester. Want to talk about the outreach centers. And this, you can see by coloring Bonner's Ferry, our outreach center there in blue, Sandpoint in the red, Silver Valley then in the green. And you can see the numbers follow much the same pattern as enrollment on campus and enrollment in CTE. So nothing particularly alarming. Our outreach centers continue to expand their services, but their growth in enrollment has been affected by a variety of factors just beyond demand in the area. Fewer dual-credit students are taking classes at the outreach centers. Oftentimes, they went to the outreach center and it was counted as numbers there because that's where it was available. As more classes are available at their high school, then those numbers aren't counted at our center. It's a win for the school, it's a win for the institution and a win for the students. That has been particularly the case in the Sandpoint Center. An additional issue that impacts the numbers that you see associated with the outreach centers is how those students are counted that they serve. Classes that are IVC-receiving, in other words, produced on campus and sent there, are not counted at the outreach centers since the class is originating elsewhere. It counts here. We're running more IVC-receiving classes now at the outreach centers, so those numbers really aren't reflected in this, even though students are at the center receiving those classes.
Did you have a question before you leave this topic?
Yes, sir, real fast. With the significant investments that have been made, particularly in Sandpoint, I'm not worried about viability, but I'm sure there's going to be some scaling done. And again, you said the numbers are a little skewed, if you will. And Bonner's Ferry, those numbers are a little bit small, but Kellogg catches my eye because at what point does Kellogg maybe become less than viable? I mean, 28, and again, I don't know how that count goes and what's in the classrooms, but that number to me is a little bit alarming. 124 to 28 over, from 12 to 16. Maybe I'm making more of it than there is. I don't know. I just, do we have any concerns in any of the three, but particularly kind of looking at the Kellogg folks?
Certainly have concerns and are always watching those numbers. What's not reported here tonight that's important to note is those centers also serve as our service sites to those areas. So while it may not show up in enrollment, those are places, and we've been tracking those numbers, I'm sorry they're not reported here, but as citizens of that area come in to receive services for financial aid, to take tests, to get information about higher education, we swipe those cards and we count those numbers. You might recall one of the last times I reported, there were some substantial numbers of citizens in that area coming into the centers to get information about programs that were here, to get information about higher education, about financial aid, about scholarship. And so they really serve as our ambassadors and our outreach centers in a different regard, not just generating credit, but attaching those students to our campus and providing valuable services onsite. We certainly continue to watch those numbers for enrollment, but there's an added value that's not reported in these figures that's important to us.
Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead, Graydon.
Thank you. Want to talk for just a second about online enrollment. Over the last five years, we've seen a decline in the total credits taken online, but the percentage of students taking at least one online course has remained fairly static. This is in large part due to the advising and scheduling process. North Idaho College has taken majors, particularly on the instructional side, to identify which courses are the most conducive to being taken within an online educational format, and they've reduced the classes that had the lower success rates. As you might imagine, one of those examples might be in remedial mathematics, and we've dramatically, and I'm not certain if we offer any of the developmental side online because those are students that need a lot of contact, and so the likelihood of success was reduced if that was delivered in that format. We've been quite intentional about reducing the availability of those classes, that the chance of success was lessened by its delivery. Over 80% of the students who completed a degree at NIC last year took at least one online course. We expect that online courses will certainly continue to be in demand, and the institution will continue to evaluate and adjust that course offering based on student need and demand. This is a slide demonstrating what I talked about, the trend of students taking at least one online course has remained fairly static. This is always information for, interesting information for us to take a look at, and that's our head count by county. Again, on the left-hand side, Kootenay County, 4,377, followed by Bonner County, followed by Boundary County, Shoshone, Bennoah, and then a combination of all other Idaho counties across the state. So our service region of the five counties, all of those furthest to the left. Our top feeder high schools also have not seen substantial change again. You're probably not surprised to see, as we've talked about this before, while it's not particularly a high school, our highest feeder are those students coming in with a GED. Be mindful of the fact that they may have received that GED at any time in their past. That's not necessarily the number of students, unlike the high school, the number of students who just received a GED and are coming in here from that last year. That's if they're coming here for enrollment and their past includes a GED, it's reflected in these numbers. Coeur d'Alene again continues to be the next highest, Coeur d'Alene High School, Lake City, Lakeland, Post Falls, Sandpoint, Timberlake, Bonner's Ferry.
There's a question over here.
Well, two things. One is I do think Rex and those guys are probably doing a good job. It was interesting, it was a year ago when they were, just before they were changing the rules, when we had the substantial graduation for the GED. It was unusually large because everybody was trying to get in under the gun, under the old rules. But, so shout out to them because I know the graduation's coming up here pretty quick. And I think, in fact, we're going to miss it because I think we're doing some other stuff as a board. One of the things that catches my eye, though, is that from a sheer head count, the fact that Lakeland has more kids than Post Falls. Either we're doing something really well in Lakeland and maybe not as good in Post Falls because Lakeland's, and close to Lake City. Now, I don't know if K-Tech's having any impact with that at this point, or, but that's for the sheer numbers. Lakeland's quite a bit smaller than those other three 5A schools, being a 4A school, and then it bleeds off to Timberlake. That's a pretty impressive number for Lakeland.
It is, Trustee Banducci. I think we have a good explanation for that, and that is that they've been one of the most aggressive schools in the north in offering dual-credit to their students. They have a dual-credit academy, if you will, and they've been pushing students real aggressively to do advanced coursework that shows up while they're in high school. It shows up in their going on to college. And particularly, they've developed that relationship with North Idaho College. That's the strength of what dual-credit does in developing an early relationship between this institution and those students enrolled in dual-credit.
Thank you.
Let me just share with you a brief summary of that report. The enrollment report and FT are down, as you know, but it was within the range that the institution expected and budgeted for, and in fact, we exceeded that estimate. This was the first spring semester, though, in five years in which we saw an increase in both applications and new student enrollment. That's good news. It's a small increase, but importantly, it's a part of a trend that began in the fall semester with a slight increase in new student enrollment. And if it continues, it should begin to slow down that decrease in overall enrollment. You heard Vice President Martin talk about that we're getting to the bottom of that decline flattening out and then with plans to increase in the future. Overall, for Fall '15 and Spring '16 enrollment period, we've seen a slight increase in new student enrollment and applications. And when we look at applications for the fall of 2016, we're seeing a significant increase year over year. Last week, when I reported for the same time in comparison to this point last year, we're up 500 applications for admission. And that's significant at this time, but a lot of work to be done to convert those applications to students enrolling here, but it's certainly a good sign. We still have a shrinking population of continuing students, though, through next year, part of that bubble that we know came through when our enrollment was dramatically increasing. But if these enrollments that follow applications in a manner similar to past years, we should continue to see an increase in new student enrollment. We have a lot of strategies in place, as you're well aware, with intrusive advising and other work being done by the institution, that we expect to see increases in our retention and our completion rates as well. So good news in the future of North Idaho College.
Any questions, Judy?
Thank you for the good news. I want to be sure, as we think about our part-time and full-time folk and the changes that we're seeing, have we identified all the barriers that we can think of that would cause folks, that we can control, that cause folks to go to part-time versus full-time?
Trustee Meyer, I'm not sure that we've identified all those. It's certainly conversations that take place every week in president's cabinet at each one of the department levels, trying to identify more than anything else. What are the barriers that keep students from coming to college to begin with or being able to stay in college once they're here? I think we have a number of strategies in place. We have six different work teams that are together now, looking at strategies to address each one of those barriers to ensure better success, better rates in our future. So I think we're on top of that. There'll be new issues that'll come forward, but I think your team will be working toward addressing those in a timely manner.
Do we do exit with interviews with the folks, some of the students who convert from one or the other or whatever, to find out what it's like for them as part of that? Talking about the staff is good, but we also need to hear from the customer.
Trustee Meyer, we certainly do in some programs more intentionally than others when they're particularly co-horted, CTE programs as an example. I think the faculty are the first ones to know exactly why something might happen. Oftentimes, they're able to step in and prevent that. In a number of other programs, and we have consideration now for making certain that students can't withdraw, can't leave this institution. students can't withdraw, can't leave this institution without being able to have a conversation with us. We provided a few years ago the opportunity for them to be able to withdraw online without that accountability. We're taking away that opportunity so that we have a chance to engage them prior to them leaving the institution and hopefully being able to save more of them and keep them here.
You got a comment?
Good job, thank you.
Thanks.
I do. Trustee Meyer, in part to your answer, I don't think it's so much that the barriers are causing that flip between part-time and full-time, it's rather what's happening within the economy. And there's two really key components here. One is that unemployment in Idaho is at the lowest level it's been in about a decade. In addition to that, Idaho is the number-one state in terms of job growth this year in the nation. And so you look at those two combinations, and there's plenty of employment opportunities for individuals who might otherwise go to college, or who would have come back traditionally to college to be retrained if they were unemployed. And so as that economy continues to get better, we're seeing more people enter the workplace, and we're seeing people come back to school in more of a part-time capacity.
Interesting.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Off the hot seat.
The next agenda item is the board chair report. I have a couple items to report. One, pretty exciting activity on the Fourth of May is going to be the groundbreaking ceremony for the Wellness and Recreation Center. Long overdue, and I think exciting for everybody. So 11:30 to 1:00 PM is going to be the groundbreaking ceremony. The Idaho Community College Consortium, which is the group that is comprised of the presidents and chairs of each of the community colleges, is going to meet in Boise on May 18th. I haven't seen the agenda yet, but we've got a couple of important items, I think, that are coming up that may well be on there, and I'll report back on those the next time I, we have a meeting. An activity that's taken a lot of time from the board, and certainly taken a lot of time from the campus, has been our presidential search. We had 51 applicants that were reviewed by a search committee comprised of half members of the college community and half from the business community, and they sent six names onto the board. Those names, those individuals are on campus, have two of them this week and four next week, for public forums and for interviews by the board, and we hope that we're able to arrive at some kind of a selection by the middle of May, although there are still a lot of details that need to be worked out. But we're well on our way on the presidential search. The last thing I wanted to talk about was the redistricting. I had the map put up here because I thought that it was something that we ought to go over. I truly do appreciate the comments and the positions that have been presented by the faculty and by the students with regard to that. Difficult decisions all the way around, but I wanted to talk a little bit about the timing because I think that was one of the issues that was raised. This bill was passed on March 24th of this year, and we were told that we had to have in place by July 1, the districts. When I was off on vacation, when I got back, I started looking into it, and what we needed to do is to have this reviewed by the State Board of Education and approved by them. They required that it be in front of them on their agenda in the June 15 meeting, and that meant we had to have it, the materials to them by May 16th, which put us in a very tight timeframe in which to actually draw it. And then we have to have all the squiggly lines legally described and have it presented to the State Board of Education. So hence, a fairly short timeframe, and one of the reasons we didn't address it tonight is trustee Nielsen was not able to be here tonight, we knew that, so we afforded him the opportunity through a special meeting to participate in the vote. The comments that were made about redoing this, the timeframe may be way too short to do that. I don't know that for sure, but the comments have been received, well-received, I got to tell you. I appreciate your comments, and then the board will consider what to do with proceeding forward. I want to impress everyone that these districts are not districts of representation. That's not what this legislation was about. This was simply some legislation that said a trustee applicant has to live in the district in order to qualify to run for the office. The vote is still by all of the electors in the county. So each district is elected by all of the electors in the entire county, and the districts themselves are simply a qualification to run for office. And I'm quite happy to have any of the other trustees comment on this because I know it's an issue that is important to everybody. Kristi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for bringing it up. I'm glad you did because I felt that I should. And I want to say, it's not an easy thing to have these kind of discussions with your fellow trustees. I don't want to come across as negative toward Todd or Ron, and I will say that Todd has been very, never got angry through any of this. He's been, and I've been pretty aggressive, and he's not gotten angry. But the reason I've been aggressive is, it's not personal toward them, it was what was the right thing to do. And that's what I struggled with, and that's why I talked out about the gerrymandering, that it was clear we came back and the majority of the board voted to gerrymander in so that all the trustees were in a zone. And we know that the other community colleges didn't do that, and we know that the board members that were affected recused themselves, and that didn't happen in this case. And so, yeah, we can lawfully do this, but what's it say about our core values? Does it pass the smell test? And it's been bothering me. We've heard two resolutions tonight. Both local media outlets picked up on it and did a story. I've had a number of constituents approach me on this issue, and it's not, when they approached me, it's not negative toward Todd or Ron, it's negative toward the board for gerrymandering. And I can't defend it. I really can't. And so I guess if we're going to have discussion about this, and now's the time, because we don't have a lot of time, if we were going to revisit this and really talk about what's the right thing to do, we have to have a map to the State Board by May 16th, which means that we would have to meet sometime next week and discuss this again.
Which is impossible, but Ken, if I may speak?
Yes.
Okay, well, first off, okay, let's do some logic here because everybody's all freaked out about, oh, this was the map that was drawn. Well, the reality is that was an arbitrary map. We were told to be within 5%. We've been within 1%, 1.5%, we've been well within the tolerances, because 5% is the actual difference that we need to be within according to the legislation. Now, let's look at this a little more closely since everybody's kind of worked up about this. We want to keep the commonality of the communities and rest of that, and Judy stressed that. So what they did here is they used, when they looked at this a second time, they took a little more and actually put more of Post Falls with Post Falls. Plus what they did, this is a little bit bigger than it started, and this, which is in the county, is with the county. So we put a little more pink in here, and this became part of the county, and Post Falls was actually kept together. So if we're keeping communities together and making sense, that having more of Post Falls see limits in the Post Falls area makes more sense, and having the county, and this is mostly rural, this is strong, strong property out here, the rest of that, staying within the county and the rural makes more sense to me also. And if you're going to really be upset, then this whole thing's a little goofy. I got this kind of area here with Christine, it kind of curves around, and it goes down here, and I got this, and I got Judy kind of parked up here, but Kenny kind of overwraps around. You could spoke it, you could do the wagon wheel, I mean, you could come up with 16 ways to do this. I mean, I talked to the guy from the county at length, Dave, and then I had the other gentleman that I talked to at length, the other Dave, come to the meeting, and there was 16 ways to go with this. So everybody's, like, we put something in stone because there was one map drawn. That was as random as the three maps that Judy presented, the one that Ron presented. How we got there, I mean, this map actually, it all looks goofy in some ways, but Christie's whole thing still looks goofy to me, no matter what we did. So I guess I make a point that we kept Post Falls more together by adding more of Post Falls, we kept more of this with the county together.
So Todd, while you're up, while you're up there, though, or wherever you'd like to sit. I think the difference is, and I do mean this respectfully, because I don't want this to come across as personal toward you and Ron.
Or any of us.
Or any of us, yeah. I think the difference is, is the directions to our GIS person bill at the time, he had no idea where the trustees lived. And the second direction was build it around the trustees. That's a big difference.
Sarah's not wrong. Again, I think the map was improved the second time, in my opinion. I think the map actually was more congruent and consistent the second time. But again, but then it goes back. As you said, I didn't scream or yell about it.
Right.
I didn't say a whole lot. I was pretty quiet on the subject. You put me on the spot at two different times, and on blogs, and I've not responded, I haven't said a whole lot. I tried to defer and be very polite about it.
It's because it wasn't personal, Todd, it was what's the right thing to do?
And I was trying to not feel attacked. But I tried to look at it analytically, again, and looking at the maps, and the random nature which was done, and the fact that I actually thought there's a couple of different ways we could have done it. We had, and it was just, Ron and Judy both had an example, although we hadn't tested it for population. But I still think, putting everything else aside, that this is a better map by putting the population maps, is again, for Judy's couple criteria, was keeping more of Post Falls, because we have it in Post Falls, and keeping the county with the county. So I looked at it that way.
I understand that. How did the board feel about, though, the fact that?
And you knew already, I already said I was not going to run, and I wouldn't put you guys to a vote.
Sure. Well, I didn't know that beforehand.
Yeah, let's try and find a resolution to this discussion.
Well, along with the discussion, is it part two? Both Ron and Todd voted, and perhaps they should have had to recuse themselves, because they voted on their own districts. And so I don't, it seems like a conflict to me. So I guess what I'd ask this board is, is there an appetite to revisit this? Because if so, we need to do it very quickly.
Yeah. Kristi, my philosophy on being chair is whenever, we're all equals, every one of us. The chair is in no superior position. So if one member of the board wants something to be put on an agenda, it gets put on an agenda, right? I think that's the only way to fairly treat everybody. So if somebody wants to revisit this, and they want it to put on an agenda, and we'll try and get the agenda in a meeting quickly, we can do that. I don't know if it will change anything. What it will do is offer an opportunity for more discussion, and maybe that's necessary. So the idea is that if there's a request to make this an agenda item, we'll make it an agenda item.
Go ahead, Judy.
Mr. Chair, when we had our last meeting, we also talked about the timeline and the fact that the law goes into effect July 1st. One of your, what I recollect as an observation about the timeline is, whatever we do now can always be changed.
No.
Okay, then let's clarify that.
No, the statute, and I reviewed the statute.
Thank you, right. Maybe Mark can help us with it.
It indicates a proposal to redefine the boundaries of a trustee's zone of a community college shall be initiated by the board of trustees at the first meeting following the report of the census. Or following the approval of additional taxing territory.
So the two occasions to precipitate a change would be once every 10 years when the census happens, or once, or any time that the boundaries of our district change?
Correct.
Okay, because I don't know that we had that understanding last time we met, so I'm adding that to my sorting of what we do. I think at that time, I also wondered, or we all wondered, since we're having special meetings, could the State Board of Ed have special meetings? Because we couldn't meet the exact timeline they need, which was a month before their meeting in June, which backed it up to May to get the information to them. And we can't speak for the State Board, but I'm not opposed to having that, consider that as another option, which would give us time to meet again on top of all the meetings we currently have, to discuss it again. One of the things that happened at the last meeting was, we really didn't get to review all the different proposals. I think Ron said he was done with his, I had some other ideas. And admittedly, as Todd described, we didn't have the population count in the proposals we were doing, because nobody had time to do that. But that's also a manageable getting of the count sort of thing.
I think we're still looking at a timeline, though. I mean, we may be able to get some dispensation from the State Board of Education, but we don't know that right now.
I just want to know all the options.
Yeah, the other two colleges have already got their proposals before them. So what lies before us is, between now and May 16th, if we can, if there's a desire to have a special meeting on this, we'll have to set it up. But it'll have to be far enough in advance of May 16th that if there is a change, that the engineers can change the descriptions and we can get the maps redrawn and get them to the State Board of Education. And I must, I'm going to remind everybody, although they don't need to be reminded, all next week is consumed with interviews with presidential candidates, so.
Well, it is very difficult. I absolutely know that all five of us enjoy being on this board, and I wouldn't want to be sitting in Ron and Todd's shoes right now. So I'm not enjoying this. It is about what we did, though. It is about coming back and saying to our GIS person, now draw us a map where all the trustees are in a zone. I just can't, I can't rectify that. I can't defend it when I'm asked about it. And so I think it's, we should at least have some further discussion, whether anything changes or not. I think we should be fairly transparent with our constituents, and we should have some thoughtful discussion. And maybe nothing will change from what we decided to do, but there might be, I guess, a little more conversation about how we got to where we're at. I know, Ken cast the tie vote, and I think, I don't want to speak for him, I'll let him speak, but I think it's very difficult to be in a position where you're going to prevent someone from running for office. That's a, that's a big deal. And I think his preference was, we'll let the voters decide and not have it on us. I get that, I really do. But I also can't overlook the map that was designed to keep us all in our seats. So I guess I would like to move forward and suggest that we do have a meeting for discussion.
Okay, well, we'll have to set it like on the 9th, 10th, or 11th, I think, at the very latest, the 11th. So I'll ask Shannon to try and get the trustees together for a meeting and notice it, and we'll put this on a single item agenda. Let me comment. It was my, I was the third vote, and quite frankly, I was the architect of the two maps. I went to Bill Richardson and I asked him to put together a map using a kind of a spoke design as best the population could be, and not to consider where the, any of the trustees resided. And he did that. And it happened that Ron and Todd resided in the same district, and it probably didn't surprise anybody because they only live about a mile or mile and a half apart. So it was, it was not absolutely predictable, but it was, it was pretty foreseeable. And then I sent it out to all the trustees for their examination and review, and asked them to get back to me with any revisions or any comments they may have. And I got comments from Judy with a couple of changes suggested, some map changes. I got one from Ron, I didn't get one from Todd.
Or you, and you get it.
Yeah, or Christie. And so I went back to Bill Richardson and I said, okay, let's take a look and see what would happen if we put the trustees' positions on this map, what would it change? The first map had a population deviation between the five districts of less than 1%. The statute requires that they be as close as practicable. Originally, it said 5%, but that was taken out, and the statute now reads as close as practicable. The revised map, the one you see in front of you, has population variations of less than 1.5%. And so when we did the population variation by recognizing where all the trustees resided, we had two options in front of us that we could deal with, that we knew complied with the statute. The suggestions that Judy had made and that Ron had made were simply lines on a map that we would have to go back and evaluate whether or not they would meet the qualifications of the statute. So it was based upon that data and the fact that, quite frankly, I had designed both of those options, that I cast my vote. And I felt... And I felt at the time, and I think I still feel strongly, that we have an election coming up in November, and that the voters need to decide who represents them. And by changing the line that would, could very well have been the initial map, I mean, it could easily have been the initial map, that we're going to let the voters decide. So that was my logic and reasoning, quite frankly, in voting for this map. But I am quite content and happy to discuss it again, and I'm going to do it with an open mind. I mean, if I change my mind, then I'll change my mind and I'll explain why. But that's the reasoning that I used when I voted for in the first place.
Couple more comments. Thank you. I think it's been a heartfelt discussion, everybody's part. It seems to me we have more information now than we did last time we did this, because in reviewing the law, we now do not have the option that we thought we had last time, which was we could change it any time later on if it didn't work right, whatever that could be. That's not the case. What we have now is once every 10 years when the census occurs. Is that correct?
Yeah, it might be three years from now.
Well, it will be three years from now, and then we have it for 10 years.
Yes.
So that impacts my thinking. Also, the fact that it isn't 5%, it's as close as possible.
Correct.
Which, when we talked last time, one of the things I thought about was some of the districts may not be exactly even or as close as possible, because I think we know that the growth patterns are going to occur in the corridor between Corral Lane and Post Falls. And so if we're looking at a 10-year timeline for when this is going to work, it wouldn't hurt to look at, the rural areas are probably going to stay pretty rural, and there's some areas that we know are going to grow. So that would affect my thinking about how we map this. And I would like to meet again as well, and it sounds like you're headed to finding dates. I would like to have these, at least the two notes I wrote down, as provisos of what our map should do. It has to probably work for either three years or 10 years. They have to be as close as possible. I don't think there are any other rules or requirements as we design this. I wondered, and other people have asked me, is there someone else? Do we want public input in any way? It's really our operation. It's our Board decision to do. But I just want to be sure. I think we're buying some more time, which is the right to do. Are there any more things we should put in this mix then in having this another 10 days or so to do it?
Well, we don't have, I don't know that we have 10 days, and the more complicated you make it, the less likely it is that we're going to find a solution, I'm afraid. And I got to tell you, there can be 100 variations on these lines.
I found that, too.
That would meet the statutory requirements, I think. And I think we need to restrict our discussion, just for the purpose of reaching a solution, to which of the two maps we want to adopt.
Is there, yeah, is there a third option, Mr. Chair, where if we started over so that no one, like, I don't feel like we're gerrymandering, Todd doesn't get singled out, where we created a new map with someone that has no idea where the trustees live, and just with the guidelines to as close as possible, and maybe we'll all end up in our own zones? But it would seem more pure.
I'm just afraid we don't have the time to do that. I mean, that requires, I mean, because that map could change, all five districts could change.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's your proposal, and then we have to get it to the engineers and everything to have it re-described and get it in, and I'm not sure if we can do it.
Don't tell us.
The legal description that must accompany the map took a minimum of five days to complete. And so if we put together a completely different map, then you need to build in at least five days so we can re-contract with the engineers to provide the legal description.
So if we're going to have, if we're going to have a meeting on this, I'd like to know what the content's going to be so that we can prepare for it. So if you're looking at multiple choices beyond the two that we have, we need to know that to see if we can prepare for that, or if we're just going to have on the agenda discussing the two proposals that were before us the last time we voted.
So I would suggest that Judy's map and the three maps she had and Ron's map, we get those to our engineer to see what the population, if any of those, would work. And so we're looking at all the maps.
We really didn't study all of them last time.
We did not. We can ask Bill, he's sitting in the back there shaking his head, he can do that? Okay, so we can get the sketches to him and see what he can do with them, and you'll have those in front of you, at least the map, you know, but we still need to get the resolution of what we're going to adopt so that we can get it to the engineers for the descriptions. So we have to have this meeting the week, the 11th through the 13th. So we'll see if we can get everybody together for the meeting, too. I mean, that's still not.
And I think the State Board date was another one of those factors we.
You could ask.
Yeah, we need to both ask, but also knowing what the timeline is, it backs us into what we need to do. Okay?
So there, besides, Judy, do you want to see us put this back on the meeting agenda? Okay, Kristi does. Todd?
No, I don't want to, I don't want to spend any more time on this. I want to be done.
All right.
I don't know about the rest of you, but my next two weeks are beyond busy, and I've been dying the last week, so I got about eight more minutes I want to put into this, and that's about it. I have no room in my schedule. I just looked at my, I just want to, I pulled my book out. The horse is dead, and we're beating it to death. I'm sorry.
All right. So we will go ahead and move forward now, Shannon, to see if she can set that up, and ask Bill if he would get those maps put together for us.
We've still got a potential conflict of interest if you still got a guy from NIC doing it. People are going to scream about that. You know, Christie, that's one of the things you made me comment on, but that's why I went to the county, and that's why I went to an independent person, is because there's still some folks, no offense, brother, but, you know, some people go, okay, well, you got a guy from NIC getting direction from President Joe maybe, or from Ken, and so people still will question that, and that process and that methodology. And I'm not casting aspersions here, but I'm just saying, no matter which way you do it, you're going to have a jauntous look by people, because I had tons of feedback. Then there were emails flying. I told you, I got a call from a state senator Friday night. I told you that.
But they were good with the gerrymandering.
And there's always people wondering, how'd that process go down, and who did all this?
Okay, but.
So you're still opening up the can of worms, and it's going to.
No, Todd, I'm not, and it's not directed towards you. I guess I just have to ask you to believe that it's not directed towards you.
I know that, but I'm just saying, it's going to, it's still, it's like getting on the blogs. The more you keep perpetuating it, the longer it takes for it to die down and go away.
Well, just having something die down doesn't mean it was the right thing to do.
Well, yeah, let me just, you know, put this to rest. We've got two trustees who've requested a special meeting to reexamine this. We're going to do that, so long as it's possible to schedule it. Now, any remarks for the good of the order?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, hang on just, yeah. Judy?
Yes, I have two. One is a report on K-Tech meeting. K-Tech only meets every two months now because they're so organized, they don't need to meet as often. There's something we need to learn there. At any rate, my K-Tech meeting today had to do with the obvious effort at coordination with what's construction I got to look at, take a quick look at the building that's happening there, and that's good news. Things are going well for K-Tech. Growth enrollment is happening there, which is part of what we're talking about, are we going to be ready for it, the coordination that goes on there. And so we'll be meeting again in June, and we'll do, ask to be on the agenda then. The other thing on calendar, which you're right, is the calendar's getting awfully full, but it also means that we're going to have to miss a couple of the graduation events going on here on campus, and I wanted to identify on behalf of all of us that the only reason we would miss them is because we're trying to do some other things that have to do with the Board. So our regrets, I think it was a GED graduation and.
As Nick banquet.
As Nick banquet.
Yep, as Nick banquet. So thank you. As you can tell, we're all working hard on trying to get the right way through this. Just because it's not easy doesn't mean we aren't going to work at it. So those are my two comments.
Todd?
I was asked to thank Graydon and the staff here for their work with the Corral Lane Charter Academy and setting up their concert that's coming up here at Schuler Auditorium on Tuesday, May 24th at 6:00 p.m. I have the other trustees, you'll pass those down, packets with information and invites and tickets. I have some additional informational sheets, if anybody'd like any. I also have some VIP seating down in the orchestra area, I guess is what it is. There's no cost to attend, it is open to the public, again, starting at 6:00 p.m. on Tuesday, May 24th. And the Charter Academy, great group of kids, great, great school. Both my boys attended there, my daughter-in-law graduated from there. Dual enrolled and graduated one year later from NIC. So she, dual enrollment program, I think, was still coming in at that time, so, but anyway. So for, want to promote that. If anybody'd like any information, I do have the stuff here, and I do, again, have some additional seats. And I have Mr. Nielsen's. If we have a package going to him, maybe I'll put that in his package.
Thank you. That concludes it. Remarks for the good of the order? Having said that, we're adjourned.